All right, we'll go ahead and get started. I appreciate everybody showing up tonight. We're going ahead and go ahead and stand and we're going to say the prayer and the pledges of the flag.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for these times. Just appreciate you being there for all of Talbot County in all the ways that you are, as well as the state of Maryland, United States, and the rest of the world. We thank you for everything and all that you do and appreciate you for all your ways. Jesus is most precious and in only name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's go ahead and get the meeting started here. So council has an agenda before them on September 26th. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Okay. Hearing none, the chair moves that the agenda be accepted as unanimous consent. Keisha, do you hear us okay?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Hayes is with us tonight, so she's home tonight, so we wish her good health and glad you're here, okay? All right, next is the minutes of September the 12th before us. Are there any deletions, corrections, or to the minutes? Okay. Right, hearing none, the chair moves that the minutes be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, next on the agenda is the dispersments of September 19th and September 26th. The council has had a chance to review the dispersments. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Okay, hearing none, the chair moves that the dispersments be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, all right. First, first up on the agenda tonight is a proclamation of suicide prevention month. Madam Secretary, would you please read the proclamation to the, to the record, please?
Proclamation, no matter what, you matter, suicide prevention month. Whereas in the United States, one person dies by suicide every 11 minutes, and suicide is the 12th leading cause of death overall. And in Maryland, the third leading cause of death for 10 to 34-year-olds, and the fourth leading cause of death for 35 to 44-year-olds, even though most of these deaths are preventable, with more Marylanders dying by suicide than by homicide every year. And whereas, the Centers for Disease Control has reported that in 2021, 48,183 people in the United States, including 620 people in Maryland, died by suicide in 2021. And whereas, suicide affects us all, with each death by suicide affecting an average of 115 people. And whereas, the economic toll of suicide on society is immense, with suicides and suicide attempts costing the nation almost $70 billion per year in lifetime medical and work loss costs. And whereas, the 2021 Youth Risk Behavior Survey conducted by local school systems in conjunction with the Centers for Disease Control, revealed that at least one in five Talbot County teenagers ages 14 to 18 had seriously considered attempting suicide in the 12 months prior to the survey, with 37% reporting symptoms of depression and 18% of Talbot County teens attempting suicide. And whereas, according to a World Health Organization Scientific Brief released in 2022, the global prevalence of anxiety and depression increased by 25% in the first year of the pandemic, and that anxiety and depression are leading precursors for suicide. And whereas, because many individuals experiencing many health, mental health systems, suicidal thoughts and behaviors, or who die by suicide, never receive effective behavioral health services for many reasons, including the difficulty of assessing the services of healthcare providers professionally trained to reduce suicide risk, the stigma of seeking behavioral health treatment, and the stigma associated with losing a loved one to suicide. All Talbot County citizens are urged to support the development of accessible behavioral health services for all citizens of our county in an effort to reduce the risk of suicide and mental health challenges for people of all ages and backgrounds, and recognize that suicide is a significant public health risk, and declare suicide prevention and mental health support a priority. Now therefore, we, the Talbot County Council, do hereby declare the month of September as no matter what, you matter, suicide prevention month, and urge all citizens to actively work toward the prevention of suicide and to reach out to one another and ask, are you okay? Listen without judgment and share vital resources to promote an inclusive and mentally healthy community. Given under our hands in the great seal of Talbot County this 26th day of September in the year of our Lord 2023.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there a motion in the second?
I'll move to approve the proclamation.
Okay, there's a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion second to approve the proclamation. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay, great. Beth Ann here. Okay, all right, come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good.
Good.
I'm Katie Tiki. I'm vice president of marketing and communications.
Okay.
And I'm Tina Jones, chief financial officer of For All Seasons.
Okay, welcome.
And for those of you who do not know us, we are your behavioral health and rape crisis center, and we offer therapy, psychiatry, victim and crisis support, and education on mental health in our community. And we have seven offices across the mid-shore, including two offices right here in Easton. And in the context of this conversation, we think it's really important that everyone know that we have a new program called Open Access, which allows people to walk in for mental health services. So during select hours at some of our locations, folks can actually come in and start receiving therapy in the same day, so there's no more waitlist. And this is really important to our community, many folks who have been waiting for mental health services and who need them very much. And we're really proud to serve the Talbot County community, and we think that this topic is especially important, as you heard, especially for our youth. We know that our youth are suffering, and there are many stressors that they're experiencing, and we need to be there for them. So we just want to emphasize this ask, listen, share, reach out to those in your community, reach out to those in your circle, ask how they're doing. Do not be afraid to ask folks if they're having suicidal thoughts. Asking the question will not cause, will not put the idea into their head. It's important to listen with compassion and without judgment, and to share the resources that are available, both at For All Seasons and the other mental health organizations in our community. So we really just ask everyone here to take the time to check in with those in their circle, to be present, and to be there for others who may be experiencing these thoughts and need immediate support. Did you want to add anything?
No, thank you. That was beautiful.
Okay. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, yep, yep, thank you. Counsel?
Just thank you for the really vital work that you do in our community. I wish it weren't so, but, but you're, you're a really vital resource, and I appreciate all the work you do, and I know so many in our community that benefit from this, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lusher.
No comment except just thank you for all you do, and I know you have a long history, For All Seasons does with suicide prevention, and we're grateful for that.
Mrs. Hayes?
Just grateful for all the work that For All Seasons does under the leadership of Beth. So thank you all for coming in tonight for the proclamation.
Yep, yep, and I'll, and I'll add that with my colleagues. We really appreciate the hard work you're doing, because it's, that's tough work. And we really appreciate you being there for us. Thank you, and we got something for you up here.
Ready? One, two, three.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Okay.
Okay, Madam Secretary, could you read the next proclamation, please?
National Voter Education Week, October 2nd through the 6th, 2023. Whereas voter education is important to ensuring transparency in the election process, and whereas National Voter Education Week, held the first week of October, equips voters with the tools and information they need to participate in our democracy with confidence, so that they can be informed, confident, and prepared voters. And whereas National Voter Education Week helps to bridge the gap between registering to vote and actually casting a ballot. And whereas during National Voter Education Week, corporate, public, and nonprofit sectors around the country organize activities to assist individuals with the process of voting, a fundamental element of our democracy. And whereas, the effort aims to help voters establish their voter identity and create a habit of voting in every single election. And whereas, the Talbot County Board of Elections strives to help voters feel empowered and confident in the voting process, and encourages them to help others do the same. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, do hereby proclaim the week of October 2nd through the 6th, 2023, as Voter Education Week in Talbot County, and encourage all citizens of the county to recognize the importance of exercising their right to vote. Given under our hands in the great seal of Talbot County this 26th day of September in the year of our Lord 2023.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay, is there a motion?
I will move for the proclamation.
Okay, is there a second?
Proclamation.
She did. Okay, is there, Madam Secretary, is a motion second?
Mr. Callahan?
No.
Mr. Step?
No.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
No.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay. All right, next, Madam Secretary?
Mr. Callahan, could I, could I have a moment to comment on that before?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
I'd love to.
Yep, yep.
I'd just like to take a moment of why I personally declined this, this request for proclamation. This came as a, as a request from our Department of Elections, which I'll wholeheartedly support voting, one of our fundamental rights in this country, and it's, I encourage everyone to do so. What I cannot back is the organization behind this National Voter Education Week. There's a company that you'll find at the bottom of their website, votereducationweek.org. At the bottom, there's a company called neoph philanthropy.org that is kind of behind this organization. They claim to be a nonpartisan organization, which in my opinion, you know, any request to, or to encourage our voters to vote should not be any sort of partisan movement. They do claim this NEO, is claims to be committed to building strong social justice movements, and based upon their 2020 Form 990 filed at the IRS, they've given over 550, or 550,000 to Planned Parenthood. I cannot personally back an organization that backs an organization such as that. Plus, I don't even see a 2021 or 2022 filing from this organization. So, you know, they also associate themselves with some other questionable organizations. So for that reason, I vote a no. But I would like to encourage anyone who wants to get voter information in Talbot County, they can go see our wonderful elections department. They are at 215 Bay Street, number seven. It's right in between Acme and the Bay Street Pond. So I encourage anyone who wants to know how to vote, how to vote, how to register, to go on over there and make sure they, they take care of that. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Yep, thank you. Any other comments?
No.
Okay, all right. Madam Secretary? Yep, next on the agenda, yep.
It's the Health Department.
Yep, no, no, update on.
National Resource Day, I'm sorry.
Yep, no problem, yep.
It's.
You just want to call?
Yeah, I can call up. Is, yeah. You guys want to come on up?
No, Catherine.
No.
Yeah.
Yep.
Hi.
Hey there.
Good evening, everybody.
Yep.
I have a, a little letter.
Yeah.
And one for you also. You would give that to one? This is what I'm really talking about. Thank you. Yeah, please say one for Keisha. My name is Catherine Poe, and I'm on the steering committee for the Resource Day 2023, which is October 14th. And I've written this letter to you, and, but also it's filled with statistics and data that come from our county, which I'm not sure everybody is aware of, because I know when I go out and speak, people don't know this. So first off, I'll put my glasses on first off. There we go, there. I'm here this evening representing the people and organizations behind our annual Resource Day, to be held on Saturday, October 14th, at Eastern Elementary School from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And I want to start, basically, we started in 2018, and it was a one-stop shopping for our neighbors in need, offering them free dental screening, heating assistance, health screening, free children's books, voter registration, immigration help, free AIDS and HIV screening, help and for, help and food for pets, free legal aid, and help for victims of domestic violence. But that is only some of the 30 nonprofit vendors who will be there that day. We will also have a motivational speaker, a free barber, special playtime for the kids, free groceries and fresh meat, as well as personal items and paper goods. Plus, everyone, vendors, volunteers, and the community coming through our doors that day, will receive a free lunch provided by both Sodexo and Eat Sprout right here in Easton. And we will have Spanish-speaking navigators and interpreters there as well. There is a reason that such a day is direly needed, and just look at these statistics, and you will see, I'm not using that word dire lightly, right now, 61% of our school-aged children, K through 12, all right, are on free and reduced meals. 70% of them are in the middle school. 77% of them are in the Eastern Elementary School. There are 200 homeless children, K through 12. I know, this is a statistic, like, how can that be? Go right to that school system, they will tell you. There are, the unemployment rate, this may surprise you, as of July 2023, it's 1.7%. People needing help have jobs, they just don't have jobs that pay well. Let me point out to you, the minimum wage is 1325 as of now, all right? If you worked a 40-hour week for 52 weeks, this is what you would take home, $27,560. And it goes up, by the way, in January to 30, excuse me, to $15 an hour. You would then take home 31,000. What does it cost just to live in Easton? Are you ready? 39,831. You tell me, all right, why people are having problems, all right? Family of four, say two adults, two children, 83,505, all right? And you see, and by the way, any italics are always where the statistics come from. People receiving SNAP, I just got these statistics as of August 2023, they don't have the September numbers yet from our Department of Social Services, all right, it's 4,604. And if you don't know what SNAP is, SNAP is the, what used to be food stamps, all right? Now we call it the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, all right? And it's a little card that looks like a debit card. But here, here's what is so interesting about that. Most of those people are working poor. And as you know, to be on SNAP, you have to have a job, all right? 11% of our residents are food insecure. That's one out of 10. Food insecure is a polite way of saying hungry. And each week, our nine food pantries and three meal providers, all right, serve 5,000 people a week, all right? And the people coming through are seniors and people who are on low income. This is why Resource Day is needed, to help our seniors and the working poor. Many people do not even realize the kind of help that is out there, and there is a lot of help. And this is the way for that day, for to get them that help. That's why I say it's one-stop shopping. They just need access, and they learn how to navigate the system. And believe me, as we all know, you've got to know how to navigate the system, all right? Resource Day will give them that opportunity. Once again, spearheaded by the Neighborhood Service Center, the Talbot Family Network, Talbot County Hunger Coalition, Eastern Utilities, Chop Tank Electric, the Talbot Library, the Talbot Public Schools, the Department of Social Services, and Well Point, we've been working since late spring for our first Resource Day since the pandemic. At the, at the back, I've included a flyer that we're sending out to all the people in our community that, for instance, that use any of our services or come through our pantries. So you can take a look at that, and you'll find a little bit more on us. I'd like to take a moment here to recognize a couple of organizations and who came here with us tonight. So would you all please stand? And I've got Neighborhood Service Center, Talbot Family Network, and, excuse me, Chop Tank Electric, I'm sorry, and Chop Tank Electric. So I really appreciate you coming to be here for this evening. So, I really appreciate you coming to be here for this evening. I should point out that these people and many of the businesses and volunteers, they are giving their time, their energy, and even dollars to make Resource Day a success every year. And I'm assuming it'll be another great success this year. Last time, over 200 people came through, advantage of our services. I am hoping we see a number closer to 300. The more we reach, the more we help. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to take them.
Okay.
Ms. Poe, I'm sure you are here as part of the effort to get the word out.
Yes.
To the public on this. Can you tell us what more you'll be doing to get the word to the folks who most need Resource Day?
Yeah, right. First of all, if their flyers are going home to, in Spanish and English, you have just the, the English version, Spanish and English, to every child, K through 12, all right, they will all be going to that. Every food pantry has them, every meal provider, since you see we have three meal providers as well. Also, all the social service agencies are going to be handing these out. So, we are really going to try to cover every base that we can to get this out, so that people know and come there.
Thank you.
Great, any, any other things?
Just want to thank you for all your efforts. It's people like you and like your coalition that make this county great.
Oh, it's these guys. I have to say, that's what it is. And, no more questions? I have one more thing.
Okay, yeah, sure.
While I have your attention. I'm going to give you an invitation. October is, all right, Hunger Action Month, and I am inviting each of you and all your elected officials, I'm going to get this to every elected official, all right, from Andy Harris, down to the town councils in each, in each town, all right? Join us at one pantry, one session, all right? And the reason we're asking you to do this is, I gave you statistics, this puts a human face on that statistic. We who work in the food pantries, I work at the wonderful Senior Center, when they, the people come through, we know those people and they know us, and we know their stories, and those stories are heartbreaking. Just join us, one, and for two hours, all right? And on the back, you will see, we have all the, all the different food pantries and times and everything. Just call me, I'll be happy to guide you or help you, I'd be delighted, but please come. All right? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a comment for Catherine.
Yes.
Yeah, sure, sure, go ahead.
I have, I do have October the 14th on my calendar to come to the Resource Fair. But I had, well, first, I want to say thank you for all the work that you've done. This will be the first time, I believe, that I participated in the Resource Fair, and I know that you have been out there, you know, holding up the banner for the food pantries as well as this Resource Fair and your partners as well. But is there going to be any type of housing information provided?
Yes, yes, there will be.
Okay, perfect. Well, I will see you on the 14th.
Okay, and hope all of you please drop by anytime or here from 10:00 to 1:00, you're more than welcome.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay. Next on the agenda is an update from the Health Department. Dr. McGuire?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, I hope you're all well and staying dry.
Yes.
In the bottom left.
Oh, there we go. All right. Well, like I said, good evening.
Good evening.
So, for those of you who don't know, I'm Maria McGuire. I'm the Health Officer for Talbot County and Director of the Talbot County Health Department, and so I wanted to come and present to the County Council, who serves as our Board of Health, an update on the health status of the county. And tonight, I want to just focus on basically three topics of interest. So, moving on, because I know it's a packed agenda. So, we are in the end of September, and guess what? We're starting to enter respiratory season, one of our favorite seasons. And so, what is the expectation this year? So, for the past few years, things in terms of winter respiratory illnesses have been extremely disrupted, and that's because of a few illnesses you may hear about in the news. You know, of course, COVID was a big one. Last year, RSV, Respiratory Syncytial Virus, really affected both seniors and young children, especially babies, and happened at the wrong time of year. And then, of course, there's always influenza. So, what is the expectation this year? Because every year, it changes. So, the CDC has said that this year, they expect the intensity of these respiratory viruses to be about the same as last year. So, that's good for our hospitals in terms of planning purposes and, and how to, how to adequately respond to these added stressors in the winter, and that the total hospitalizations for COVID-19, RSV, and flu should be about the same as last year. And so, as with last year, the total number of hospitalizations this year is expected to be higher than before the COVID-19 pandemic, so we're still not quite back to normal in terms of winter hospitalizations. And one of the reasons why we expect this year to be the same as last year is, you know, this year, there's, there's widespread, what they call population-level protective immunity to COVID-19 from people having, you know, at least one, if not multiple, COVID infections and/or vaccinations. So, we don't expect these crazy spikes that we had certainly a couple of years ago. And that is good news for our EMS, and it's good news for our hospitals. We do expect that COVID-19 might peak a little bit earlier than last season, and that's because there wasn't a lot of activity over the summer, and we are starting to see that a little bit with the start of school. We've seen a lot of kids getting sick, fortunately not severely ill. And influenza season, we expect to have what's, you know, the typical range of severity, which can be a broad range, I will say. Influenza can be a bit unpredictable. And then, RSV, like I said, Respiratory Syncytial Virus is likely to return to its normal seasonal patterns, and so I said last year, it peaked in October, that was before we were ready for it. It usually peaks between November and March, and that's a disease that, like I said, really affects seniors and especially babies, and hospitalizes them and puts them in the ICU. So, we have already started to, sorry, I skipped one thing. So, the good news is this year, there are some new vaccines that we have in our arsenal. So, influenza, we have every year, every year it changes slightly to address the most common variants that have been circulating, and those are available now. So, go to your pharmacy, your doctor, they should be easily available, the flu vaccines. COVID-19, I'll talk a little bit more about in a couple of slides, but there is a new vaccine that was approved on September 11th and is somewhat available now, it should get more available later. RSV, there is a new vaccine available, this is the first time there has been a vaccine available ever for adults and also for infants. And so, for people 60 years old and older, and for pregnant women, they're recommended to get this vaccine, because those are, with the elder adults, the, there's a higher risk of hospitalization from this respiratory virus. And then, for women in pregnancy, they can actually help prevent transmission to their, to their newborn, okay? Because it's really those very, very young babies that really suffer from this. And so, those are going to be available, they're, they should be coming onto the market now. And then, for infants less than eight months old, they, there is a new, it's not technically a vaccine, but we'll just put it in that category, it's called a monoclonal antibody. So, this is really exciting, because before, we haven't really had much in our toolkit to help prevent those infections. So, what's going on with flu? We're starting to see some activity. Technically, we're actually at the end of last year's flu year, the way the CDC starts the year, it starts in October, so we're in the very, like, last week of, of last year's flu year. And I just circled on this graph, just a tiny little smidge up of the labs having positive cases of flu. And this graph, just to orient you, red is the season year 2022 to 2023, so, you know, the, whatever, this year's winter season hasn't even started yet. Green is 2021 to 2022, so last year, two years ago, really. Blue is 2020 to 2021, and then, yellow is 2019 to 2020, which you could consider, like, probably the last normal year, so to speak. And the reason only the red line has the longer tail into the summer is because they only started collecting the data over the summer this past year. So, next year, we'll have more information about what's been going on this summer, because in the Southern Hemisphere, they have flu season in the summer. So, where can you get your flu vaccine? You can go to your primary care doctor. There's several pharmacies in the county, I believe there are eight, and you can easily get them anywhere. The Health Department, we do some flu vaccination for higher-risk residents. This includes having clinics in assisted-living facilities and congregate care facilities, and then, if there's supply left over from those clinics, we do offer it open to the public, but it depends on the uptake at those sort of privately arranged clinics. And then, for kids, those who are eligible for what's called the Vaccines for Children Program, which is any child on Medicaid up to the age of 18, and any uninsured child can come into the Health Department for honestly any vaccination, but that does include flu and COVID as well. For COVID, we're seeing some increases in hospitalizations, so this is, this is a graph of the hospitalizations in Maryland since, since the kind of tail end of the summer, that's actually not correct, it should say August 2023, sorry about that. So, I'm sorry, that is correct, that's last summer, August 2022, and we had a peak in our hospitalizations in January to almost 1,000 in a day, and then it really went down in the summer to below 100. And now, as of today, there are 276 people admitted in hospitals throughout Maryland with COVID-19 infection. So, we're starting to see it ramp up. Hopefully, that will just either plateau or go down again, but we'll see throughout the winter. And so, just a brief update on what's going on with COVID. So, the public health emergency, so what we officially term the pandemic, ended officially at the federal level on May 11th, 2023. So, what does that mean? No more, no more funding for it. So, what do you, what does the average person do if they want to get tested or vaccinated? Well, we have to rely on our standard health system at this point. So, for tests, where can you get tests? So, the Health Department does have quite a lot of take-home tests, not enough to give everyone in the county one, but we've been getting in a couple orders of about 1,000, which, you know, from different sources, and purchasing some as well. And so, anyone right now who wants to get a take-home test can, can go into the Health Department lobby or one of the two libraries in the county and pick one up. Another great option is the federal government, as of yesterday, is offering yet again the option to order some for free on their covid.gov website. So, it's really simple, you just go to covid.gov and order, and I think it's up to four tests for, and it comes to your home a matter of weeks later. So, those are some good options for free tests, and you can also go to, you know, your doctor and everything, but these home tests are a lot more convenient, to be honest. But we are not doing those widespread, you know, testing clinics anymore. And quite frankly, there really hadn't been the demand for it at this point. So, for vaccines, like I mentioned, there's this new, what they call a monovalent vaccine that was approved on September 11th, so both brands, Pfizer and Moderna, were approved by the FDA on that date, and that's for everyone aged six months and older. And the next step in that approval is for the CDC's Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices to determine who it's recommended for. And so, they did recommend it be added on the standard immunization schedule for everyone six months and older. And so, those are available at pharmacies and physician offices. So, I know in town, and it keeps kind of changing where things are available, but there are right now a couple pharmacies that do have them, because we've been getting loads of calls, so CVS and Walgreens definitely have appointments. I got my COVID vaccine on Friday night, and it was fine. Certainly much easier to handle than the first one. And there will be more availability as the manufacturing and distribution ramps up. So, this is a case of we're now in normal vaccine, normal medicine distribution, not the federal government is putting all sorts of resources to get this out ASAP. Why? Because the urgency is not there as it was in, you know, two, three years ago. So, so, for instance, the Health Department has ordered some doses, but certainly not enough to vaccinate the, you know, tens of thousands of people we were used to. And part of the reason is these now cost something. They cost $110 per dosed for someone to buy. And again, we don't have funding for that. So, we've bought some, we're going to be doing some, some vaccination clinics, add again, some high-risk facilities, and, but there is a program being offered for uninsured individuals, and that's called the Bridge Program, it's a federal program. So, anyone uninsured can get a COVID vaccine at health departments and federally qualified health centers. So, in this region, we have Chop Tank, and so they will be getting vaccines. We have not gotten them yet. I've been told sometime in October, we should get some, we're getting a very small amount. Our first, our first allotment will be 20, so, and I'm hoping to get some more, but it will not be enough to cover every uninsured person. And that, again, goes back to funding at the federal level. So, that is the update on vaccines. So, if you want a COVID vaccine, which is a very good idea right now, go, you can make an easy appointment at some of the bigger pharmacies, and then more of our pharmacies, we've called all of them, and they all plan to obtain it, they've all pre-ordered, but they just haven't gotten them in quite yet, okay? All right. So, I wanted to shift gears and talk about where are we with the opioid epidemic? Because this is something that has received so much in terms of resources and attention the past few years, and I really wanted to see, are we making any progress? What are the trends? And so, this is a graph of all the drug and alcohol overdose deaths in Maryland from 2011 to 2022. It doesn't break down which type of substance caused the death, but what I wanted to show was that really our opioid epidemic started in this early 2010 years. Some of you may remember when we started, you know, obtaining funding for it, and it looked like in the sort of 2018, 19 timeframe, overdoses may have started to plateau. But of course, what happened at that point, unfortunately, was we had a life and world-altering pandemic, and they increased, and I'm just starting to see over the past two years with preliminary data that, or with data from those two years, that the number of deaths from overdoses statewide is starting to decrease. And if that is the trend, we want to certainly have that continue. This graph, it's a little hard to see, but what it shows is basically that the overdose deaths in Maryland are predominantly related to fentanyl, which is this green line. The other substances on here are cocaine, and the, the blue line that went up and then came down actually is heroin, so that seems to be less, less of an issue. Fentanyl has really replaced things. And so, what I wanted to see is, is this true in the Midship, this trend, is it true in Talbot County? And so, in the Midship, we do have, we do see that same trend line of the overdoses for the past five years increase during the 2020, 2021 year, and then last year did start to decrease. So, we're hoping this trend does continue. And then, in Talbot specifically, we have a lot fewer, which is good news, but they also went up in 2018 and then peaked in 2020. So, I'm going to go back. So, you know, is this a real trend? We'll, we'll see, you know, every trend, you have to look at, the year-to-year data, and if so, does this mean things are finally working? And so, I think if this is real, it's probably a combination of a lot of things. One of the things is there's a lot of widespread distribution of Narcan. So, what I didn't show was the non-fatal overdoses, so these are overdoses that don't result in death, but may show people going to the ER, calling EMS. And so, those data do show, I got some from Shore Health that show in the same time period, there was the same type of curve that peaked in 2020. In Talbot specifically, for Talbot residents who went to Shore Health ER and had diagnosis codes of overdose, the, there was actually a significant decrease. So, in 2018, there were 745 of those overdoses that showed up in those, in that, in those EDs, and in 2022, there was 190. So, that's a significant decrease for Talbot residents presenting to their EDs. We don't have the number of overdoses that happen just in total, because they, they touch different sources, you know, some are with law enforcement, some are with EMS, some just show up to the hospital. So. So, so Narcan will help prevent death. And we've distributed, I think something like 700 of those kits, you know, this year. And so that's, you know, what we want to do though is prevent all overdoses, which involves preventing the use, right? And so there has been quite a lot of engagement by our peer recovery specialists who help guide someone in substance use along the recovery journey. And our peer recovery specialists at the health department have engaged 755 individuals in the past year. And another, another variable that has been helping is the increased availability of medication assisted treatment, which is the standard of care for, for getting someone started on the recovery process. So I'm hoping that this shows maybe a trend to the good news, but it's taken quite a lot of effort and resources still. All right. So moving on to the next topic, I wanted to mention about what's going on with maternal child health in this county. So I asked my epidemiologist to give me some data on how, what is the health of our pregnancies and our, and our young children, our births in this county? And so every year, there's about 300 to 400 births in the county. And this shows the racial and ethnic makeup of those births. And the infant mortality is higher than we'd like. So in Talbot County, the rate of infant mortality, which is a death in an infant between birth and age one, is 6.4 per 1,000 live births. And just to, you know, frame that, we have about 350 live births a year. So with statistics, sometimes our county, we have to do a little translation, you know? In Maryland, the rate is actually tiny bit lower, 6.1 deaths per 1,000 live births. And in the U.S., it's 5.4. So where does this, how does this compare to quite frankly, the rest of the world? So I looked at the other OECD countries, which these are typically your, you know, your, your wealthy countries, your established developed countries. And they, it starts way on the left with Japan with the lowest infant mortality rate. And the, on the right is South Africa. So where do we fit? Well, the U.S., out of most of these countries, we, we've never had a great infant mortality rate compared to some of our peer countries. And so we are this red line here. And then where does Talbot fit? If Talbot were a country, we are equivalent to Argentina. And so, you know, if you think about what are, what are our resources, what are, what is the wealth of, of this, you know, community and the country? That's, we should be a little bit better. So why is this happening? And so the March of Dimes gives ratings to different states. They don't give ratings to counties, especially small counties, but they give the state of Maryland a D-plus rating in terms of maternal child health. And one of the reasons is because of a high preterm birth rate and inadequate prenatal care. And so we see this resulting in high rates of low birth, low birth weight and also preterm births. And so when you have a baby who doesn't develop adequately during pregnancy and is born too early, they need not only quite a lot of medical help, but they're off to a worse start. They're already behind when they're born. And so the rates of both low birth weight and very low birth weight are slightly higher in Talbot than in the rest of Maryland. And the rates of preterm births is also slightly higher in Talbot than the rest of Maryland. So this is opposite of what I usually present when I say usually Talbot, when you take all health issues, is a bit healthier than other counties or than the average for Maryland. But, so that's why I've labeled this, you know, a maternal child health crisis. We, we can do better because we do better in other realms. And so one of the indicators of the problems we're seeing is the participation in WIC. And this is Women Infant and Children Program, which is a nutrition program for women during pregnancy and for women and children after birth to provide healthy nutrition. It's a federal program available throughout the country. And so what this graph just shows is that the participation in the WIC program from Talbot families is higher than the rest of Maryland. And this is, this is a means tested program. So it shows that our women who, our families who are having babies are, are eligible for this program. So they are struggling more with poverty. And the other thing, the other indicator I looked at was smoking during pregnancy. So it's universally recommended that everyone abstain from smoking during pregnancy because it is very problematic for healthy pregnancies and births in so many different ways and really disrupts the development of, of babies. And so what we're seeing also is that Talbot is in the red line and Maryland's in the blue line. And so our smoking rates during pregnancy are higher than the rest of Maryland. And so the, and this is not the most up to date data unfortunately, but sometimes we have to wait a few years to get the right data, but, or the most recent data, but the percent of live births in Talbot in 2017, 10.7% were born to women who smoked during pregnancy. And so that really does not bode well for, for healthy pregnancy. And so there's some other contextual issues that have been going on that have caused some, some difficulties for our pregnancies in this county. In 2021, there were, there had been two obstetric gynecology practices located in the county. They served the entire mid-shore, quite frankly. And unfortunately, one of those two closed. And so that really decreased access to women's healthcare and prenatal care in the county. So what we're seeing actually is, is a lot of women, when they're pregnant, calling us and saying they're having trouble getting into prenatal care up to about the third and even the fourth month. And so that's a struggle because we always want the, you know, the goal is always to get early prenatal care, to get women off to a right start. And this is also in the context of just some of the general issues we have with, quite frankly, rural health access, where it's difficult to obtain general primary care. And then of course, a lot of people struggle with transportation. And so there's, you know, in the context of everything, it's, it's a hard problem to fix. And so what can, you know, it's a systemic problem that we all have to work together to fix. So what does the health department do to help this problem? There's a few things we've been doing. One of my strategic priorities when I came on board was to put some focus on maternal child health because quite frankly, if we can improve that, it's a very high rate of return on investment. And so some of the things we do is we offer case management during pregnancy. We counsel women to stop smoking during pregnancy. We help enroll them in substance use treatment. And we have a new program I'll mention in a minute that provides comprehensive support to women during pregnancy who are at high risk of problems. Clinical services, this is something that we used to provide and then over the years stopped. And so because we're finding women have a hard time getting into women's health providers, we're hoping to take off some of the demand for some of the services that we can provide. Things like pap smears, you know, cervical cancer screening, some basic vaccination, like HPV vaccination and, and basic contraception care. And so if this can, if we can provide those services, that will offload the demand on our physicians who need to provide the more complicated care. And we also support families during the first critical years of life through some other programs. We have some home visiting programs. And then we have a program that is actually early child education that one of its goals is to help alleviate poverty. So these are some of the programs that we offer. The one on the left is called SPOT and it is the Supporting Pregnancy Outcomes in Talbot County. This officially started in May of this year. And since May, we have ramped up our caseload to 33 women who are enrolled. Some of these are women with substance use disorder, some of these are teens, but they're all women at high risk of having problems with pregnancy. And so this program really supports the women throughout their pregnancy and, you know, and provides, addresses needs. And so we're really excited that this has really taken off and our referrals are through the roof. We also have Healthy Families America. This is a home visiting program that provides developmental education and assessment, again, for high risk families. Our early head start program is developmentally appropriate education that prepares children for preschool and optimizes kindergarten readiness. And that's for babies six weeks to three years of age, which are really the very critical developmental years. And again, I mentioned the clinical services expansion we're trying to offer, not just in the women's health realm, but in some other realms so that we can really help alleviate some of the health access issues in the county. So that is what I wanted to present to you this evening to give you a taste of what's, what are some of the issues we face? And I appreciate your attention.
Yep, I appreciate it too. So council, any, any questions or?
Thank you. Thank you for all you're doing to, to save lives in this county. A couple of questions. You, you did talk about how few COVID vaccinations you are now able to offer because of the federal, federal funding ending, ending and such. When you, when you do administer those, those vaccinations, do you, do you routinely provide vaccine information statement? And, and what, what does that typically contain?
Yeah, exactly. So the vaccine information statements, these are pretty standard statements provided by the CDC with all the information about a vaccine that a recipient would need to know to make an educated decision about vaccinating. So anyone who's issuing any vaccination, not just COVID, is required to provide a vaccine information statement. And so if you get, you know, I don't know, a flu shot or any other vaccine and you don't get one, it is your right to receive a vaccine information statement. And this includes information about what the, what disease the vaccine is trying to prevent. It includes information about the risks and benefits of the vaccine. And it includes information about, you know, what you should expect after you receive it, you know, some side effects. And so, so those are very important because it provides an educated, you know, we always have to get informed consent anytime healthcare providers administer any intervention. And so that is one of the ways we can provide education and, and make sure the patient is informed when they choose to receive the health service and in this case, the vaccination.
And when, when either you or any private provider administer vaccines, who is it that is administering the vaccine? What, what kind of qualifications?
So there's certain types of providers who can give vaccines, so not anyone off the street. And so often these are nurses or pharmacists. Physicians can give them too. And during the sort of height of the pandemic, there were some governor orders that expanded that to include things like paramedics and different categories. Those were temporary solutions to allow more people to vax, to be able to vaccinate. But typically there are certain licensed providers that have to, have certain qualifications to be able to administer a vaccine because it is, you know, introducing something into the skin. It is an, an intervention.
And you noted the, the rise of the respiratory illnesses as, as expected during this winter and in, at a rate that will likely, you said, parallel last winter's experience. Is, is there any discussion at the state level or in any other jurisdiction about, about masking requirements once again?
That is, is, there's no current discussion about that this year. We don't expect that to be anything that would be proposed. We expect that, you know, certainly a lot of people are choosing to wear masks when they go out and about, when they travel. Maybe it's because they are, you know, on an airplane and, or whatever. And so that's certainly something anyone can do to be safe. And, and that's really a matter of assessing your own risk profile. So, you know, a 25-year-old marathon runner may, may not choose to wear a mask, but someone who's, you know, 80 years old with emphysema would. So, so I think that's a matter of sort of risk-based decision-making. And really, everyone should discuss with their own healthcare provider, what's the best solution for them. But at this time, there's no, there's no discussion or plans for any type of recommendation at the state level about masking.
And finally, just, just a comment, which is, which is every time that you present to us, I'm, I'm always learning something new. You are present, presenting us with, with different information, different areas in which you are, are doing work. And the, this time around, the, the, the data you presented on, on maternal child health is, I mean, it's, 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 it sounds like a wake-up call. It's, it's pretty alarming that clearly we should be able to do better in, in a place like Talbot County. And so thank you for raising the awareness of that issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Spooky. Nothing. Nothing. Mr. Stat?
Yeah, I have a couple, a couple of statements here and, and one, and one question for you, Dr. McGuire. So to, to Mr. Lesher's point earlier, so about the vaccine information statement, I have, just to understand the process and how that works, back when we had the, the location open on Marble Avenue, went in there just to inquire about it and to actually, to receive one of those statements in advance of, you know, inquiring about it. And the, the gentleman who was working the front counter there could not, had no clue what I was talking about, right? As we all know, it's state law that they're required to, as you mentioned, to, to hand that over. And I could not get that from the, the person that was working in there. Even more shocking though, after I left, or as I was getting ready to leave, the gentleman there who was not the administrator of, of the vaccines proceeded to make a recommendation on which one he thinks I should get. And not coming from someone who should be administered, or shouldn't be administering those, that was a, that was a big concern of mine. I brought that up to several people and it's, that was a concern to me. So I just, I wanted to, I wanted to get that one out there. The statistics you mentioned here, we spent a lot of time on, we spent a lot of time on COVID, flu, RSV, opioids, which that's going down according to the data. That's, that's a good thing, infant mortality here. But, you know, at, when you were here on the, on the 14th of February, you know, we had talked about, you know, do we have any campaigns for any of the other, the bigger killers here in Talbot County? I mean, from your presentation on the 14th of February, hearts number one, cancer, accident, stroke, Alzheimer's. I mean, are we doing anything to try and mitigate those effects? Because I see, I see advertisements in the newspaper for, for diabetes, which, you know, is, is our number seven on the list here. I even heard radio advertisements for, for AIDS and hepatitis C. So I mean, we're, it seems to me like we're focusing on a lot of the wrong things and not the one, the number one, two, three, four, five, six killers in Talbot County. So what are, what are we, what are we doing to help in that, in those areas?
So there's a lot that's going on. And if I were to give you a presentation on every program administered by the health department, which of course is just one element of the health system in this community, it would not, it would take more than the 10 minutes I was allotted. So yes, exactly. So we have, at least in the health department, you know, heart, blood pressure screening. We have diabetes coaching and screening. And so those are things that really up till now have been more centered in the, you know, private health world, to be honest. So when, when people go see their primary care doctor, and that's why when you go to, and even now dentists, you know, do blood pressure screenings every visit. And so those, those are, those are, you know, and those are elements that we all, the entire health system works together to, to prevent. This health department, we do not administer, we do not manage, you know, heart disease. We do not manage our blood pressure. That is not our role. And so we provide education, we provide some case management services, we provide education. And so, and we would do, we would love to do more. And if you find some funding to help us, we would love to use it and implement it. But yeah, there's several, and if you want more details on the specificities of the programs we have to deal with those chronic illnesses, and I'd love to provide that. But what, I do say, I have, I share the same concern and complaint in terms of the lack of focus on chronic health diseases. And so these are, as you say, you're correct in that these are the number one killers. These are the, you know, the, the highest prevalence, you know, conditions. Do we get any funding from the state or federal government or county government to deal with these issues? No, we do not. And so it kind of comes from, we just piece things together. And I think that's where, that's a byproduct of what's called the boom and bust, you know, public health funding, where when there's a big issue, Ebola, you know, COVID, we get funding and resources. And then for the chronic issues, we really don't get much to be able to build that infrastructure. So that's something I also kind of struggle with.
Good. Good. Mrs. Haye?
Yes, I just had one question for Dr. McGuire. In regards to the-
Good. Mrs., Mrs. Haye?
Yes, I just had, um, one question for Dr. McGuire. Um, in regards to the, um, well, two things I want to say you touched on. Reason why I'm not in front of you today is because I'm quarantined because I was exposed to someone that had COVID and tested positive on yesterday. So, COVID is among us still, unfortunately. Um, but second, the reason for the infant mortality, do you have that information by age? Do you see that we're having pregnancies, um, teenage pregnancies that's causing the, um, reason for infant mortality? Do you have anything along those lines?
And do you mean for the state or for Talbot locally?
Talbot County, Talbot County specifically, yes.
Well, so, uh, I'd have to look back at the cases over the past few years because we have luckily, um, very few each year. So, it averages, you know, maybe one or two per year according to that rate. Um, and so, honestly, one of the bigger problems we've noticed is substance use. Um, and I can't go into details about particular cases, but, um, sometimes individual, you know, babies can get access unintentionally to substances. Um, teen, you mentioned teen pregnancy. Um, I'll have to look into see if any of our recent deaths over the past five years were related to that. Um, and a lot of times, it's sudden infant death. So, we do a lot of education on how to, you know, help prevent that, so save baby sleep. Um, and so, yeah, I'll look and see if I can find more specific data on the specific causes of death. Um, and sometimes those are congenital anomalies, I will say. There was, um, there've been some, there's been some cases where it's a congenital anomaly that's not discovered until the autopsy. But again, that comes down to, could we have discovered that with better prenatal care, you know? So, um, so yeah, let me look into that and see if I can get more specific information for you.
Okay. And then one more question. Do you give out information regarding, um, the signs of premature labor? Like the signs that women can look for if they're having cramps, um, you know, for the younger mothers, sometimes they don't know the signs, what to look for if they're going into labor or potentially, you know, it's going to have a miscarriage. Or is there information at the health department that you give to those that, um, may be part of your, um, your groups or that you're working with?
Yeah.
As part of your social work?
Yeah, exactly. So, so like I mentioned, our, uh, our SPOT program, our Supporting Pregnancy Outcomes, um, that is run by a, our maternal child health nurse. And so, she counsels women on how to, um, uh, you know, how, what are the signs of a healthy pregnancy? And what are the signs of, of an unhealthy pregnancy, um, you know, make sure you have movement and all this. And so, um, so that is done with the, with the, the individual caseload and with the groups. Um, and so, one of the things that I hope to increase is to get that education more out to the community. And so, um, we actually just hired a Director of Community Health Education who is on his fourth day on the job. And so, we're hoping to get that education more widespread because you're right, it is important for, for women to learn that. And that, that's one of our roles, one of our responsibilities as a health department is not just to administer programs one-on-one or directly. It's to educate the community and, um, give them the information they need to optimize their own health.
Yeah, well, thank you for that. Um, this is something near and dear to my heart. I lost my first child at 20 weeks. He was 20 weeks old. I delivered early and she lived for 20 minutes. And so, in three days is actually her death date. So, this is something that's dear, um, near and dear to my heart. So, if I can help you with educating the public in any way, please feel free to reach out and let me know. So, thank you.
Oh, thank you. I definitely will reach out. Thank you for that.
Okay. Any, any other discussion? Okay. Thank you, Dr. McGuire. I really appreciate it. Okay. Okay. Next up is a presentation of Talbot County Public Schools. Kevin will come on up. FY25 Capital Improvement Plan. Welcome.
Thank you, President Callahan. Good evening, members of the council and staff. Can we get it? I'm sorry, yeah.
There you go. All the way over to the left.
It's on where? I'm sorry. Oh, okay. My apologies. I'm having some technical difficulty here. Thank you, Susan. Sorry about that. All right. So, once again, good evening, everyone. I come before the council this evening to request consideration of the Talbot County Public Schools FY25 Capital Improvement Plan. The entire CIP document has been provided, and my presentation tonight focuses on the details surrounding the construction funding request for the Chapel District Elementary School renovation and addition project. So, the first few slides of this presentation are going to be excerpts from the IAC Form 102B, which is a request for major construction funding. And this first slide is, uh, just a summary of the request that will be submitted to the, the state with this, um, with this submission. So, highlighted in blue is the FY25 request of 6.2 million. In green is the balance of the construction funding of 5.5 million for a total, uh, construction funding request of 11.7 million. Highlighted in yellow is just this year's request, the FY24 request for the, uh, design of the project. Next slide, uh, just shows a, uh, enrollment projection. Uh, and also highlighted in blue is just the, um, the partial adjacent school waiver that we received during the planning request, which was this year. And just to kind of refresh what that is, um, the state, uh, accepted our request to waive the excess enrollment at Easton Elementary School, which garnered about, uh, four and a half million more dollars towards the project from the state. So, right now, I am asking the state to recognize 392 students, which is our seventh year enrollment projection. Now that, I just want to caution the, the council that that is, uh, is in flux for a number of reasons. So, that may not be the number that we go with. And I'll certainly provide updates, uh, when that determination is made by the state.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yeah.
Can, can you explain why that, that shows enrollment going up? And is, is that because of redistricting? Is, uh, is that because of proposed development in this? What, what are the factors behind that?
So, uh, so, Mr. Lesher, there's a number of factors. Good question. Um, so number one, I think it's, it's important to frame it in the context in which we have to make determinations. So, um, the Maryland Department of Planning, uh, gives enrollment projections for each county. And we have to kind of work within the confines of those projections and have to be within 5% of those numbers that they come up with. But specific to Chapel, uh, I would say that there's a couple of issues. Um, normal, uh, fluctuation in enrollments based on trend data. And also, uh, I think that this number also factors in the, the anticipated increase for the three-year-old program that's going to be required as part of the Maryland blueprint, blueprint. So, I think that's what we're looking at for that 392. So, this slide just is a summary of the budget. And just want to reiterate, and I know I've said this before to the council, but these are, um, budget projections based on the state formula for funding. Uh, so, so with the state's formula in mind, starting at the far right, we're looking at about 12.4 million in state participation total, including this year's design funding. The estimated local funding would be 17.5 and a total estimated project cost of 29.9, uh, for the, for the complete project. Now, there's a number of, of factors that are excluded from that, um, one of which, just an example, is the Critchlow-Atkins portion of that, of the project is included in this projection. Uh, that is, that is something that the county would be reimbursed for, you know, at the time of, uh, construction. And also, uh, just once again, uh, similar to the enrollment projection number, there are a number of factors that are changing at the state and currently being considered. So, um, I just want to reinforce the fact that, that this is based on their estimations and, um, some changing, um, inputs, uh, related to how many square feet the state will recognize per student, uh, the, the dollar amount recognized, uh, per square foot and that type of thing. So, this is going to be refined. Uh, we're just, we're required to submit this in the, um, the standard calendar process of the state. And so, it kind of works in conflict with the construction schedule. So, as we move forward, I'm hoping to refine this better.
Mr. Schaefer, could you repeat one, one piece there? The, the Critchlow-Atkins portion of the building will, will or will not be eligible for reimbursement from the state?
So, um, so the way that we allow that to, that portion of the building to participate is through something called a cooperative use space. The state recognizes 3,000, 3,000 square feet of cooperative use space within a building that we are allowed to kind of dictate how we utilize those square footage. And, and the partnership with Critchlow-Atkins certainly supports our families. And so, we, we, you know, we garner some of the state's support through that process. Now, I want to be clear though, it will not be all of it. So, Critchlow is going to, a portion of this building is going to be larger than that 3,000 square feet. What we're planning to do though, just to kind of quantify it, for Critchlow is one of the classrooms, they're looking to add three there. But one of those classrooms is going to be an ad alternate. So, we'll be able to see what the real cost is at the time of bid. And if they can afford it, then we'll move forward. If not, then we'll, we'll back that off.
Thank you.
And, uh, the last slide is not, uh, required by the state, but I like to include it for, uh, both, for the state and both the board and the, the council. Highlighted in blue is just, uh, this year's request for, for Chapel's funding, uh, of the 6.2 million from the state. And then it just kind of gives a breakout of what the local anticipated portion would be. And also, um, next year is an FY26 for the balance of the Chapel project. And then also, uh, priority two, looking out into the future. Obviously, this could change. You know, this is, this is something that's a, a bit of a moving target should something come up. But Easton Middle School roof. And then, um, in FY, uh, 28, we'd be looking at replacing rooftop units at Easton High School. But once again, just kind of laying the groundwork and letting everybody know that that's what we're looking at. So, I know that's a brief presentation, the, but I wanted to kind of keep it short. Um, but I can certainly, um, answer any questions that the council may have. Uh, but I am asking that the council consider supporting the document as submitted this evening.
So, the request tonight is for us to?
Yeah. So, the request is, um, similar to, um, to any funding request, is to provide a support letter for the project, which would allow us to, you know, submit that to the state as part of the CIP project. Uh, once again, I think there's always disclaimer in that letter that just basically says that pending available funding.
One, one other question. Uh, I don't recall this detail with the HVAC replacement in this project. Uh, I do recall that with Easton Elementary School, we added geothermal, uh, for operate, lower operational costs down the road. I, I recall also that, uh, that we, uh, a previous council did not move forward with, uh, rooftop solar, simply because of the, the upfront capital cost of that. Uh, are, were any of those considered in this? And, and were any of those included in, in this project?
Yeah. Uh, another great question. Um, so, so yes, as far as the geothermal goes, we are, um, planning to move forward with the geothermal installation for this project. It makes sense for a number of reasons. Um, but obviously, most importantly, reducing the, um, the operational cost of the building. Uh, there is an upfront, just a full disclosure, there is an upfront, you know, cost for, for a geothermal system. Um, but over the long term, lifecycle costs would be reduced. And so, so ultimately save, save money. As far as the solar, uh, we are looking at that right now, um, as to whether or not it can be included. It will certainly be an ad alternate for the project. And so, once again, you know, depending on where the bid comes in, uh, for the project, we, we would, you know, certainly keep the council in the loop on, on what the cost would be, uh, should that be problematic. So.
Thank you.
Good.
No questions?
No questions. Mr. Step? Yeah, Keesha? Yeah, yep. Yep. Any question, Keesha?
No, no questions.
Okay. No, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Well, if, if, if that's, uh, if there are no further questions, I'll move for the letter of support, uh, for, uh, to allow this project to go forward and leverage the state funding.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. We got a motion, second, to go ahead and, uh, and have a letter of support. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Okay. Good job.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Yep. Okay. Next on the agenda, Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and, uh, um, we got an introduction to administrative resolution. Can you go ahead and read, read the resolution into the record, please?
Administrative Resolution Regarding Facial Coverings and Vaccinations in Talbot County, Maryland. Whereas the County Council of Talbot County, Maryland, the County Council, recognizes all businesses in Talbot County, Maryland, the county, to be essential to their owners, operators, employees, and patrons. And whereas, the County Council recognizes all places of worship in the county to be essential to their clergy, staff, and congregation. And whereas, the County Council recognizes all public and private schools in the county as essential to the education and well-being of the school's administration, staff, and students. And whereas, the County Council recognizes and respects health, privacy, and parental rights. And whereas, the County Council believes that healthcare decisions should be made solely by individuals or parents or guardians acting on behalf of those they are caring for, and encourages individuals to seek guidance from healthcare professionals of their choosing. And whereas, the County Council respects and recognizes parental and student medical and religious rights pursuant to Code of Maryland Regulations, COMAR, 10.06.04.04 and 10.06.04.05. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of Talbot County, Maryland, that in furtherance of the foregoing, the County Council shall not require citizens, employees, worshippers, students, or visitors in the county to wear a face mask or facial covering in any indoor or outdoor setting, or produce any form of vaccination record or passport to be employed, conduct business, practice their religious beliefs, or go about their daily activities. It be it further resolved to the extent required under state law and regulations, including but not limited to COMAR, Section 10, 34, 32.06, whenever the Talbot County Department of Health administers a vaccination, it should provide a current vaccine information statement, a VIS, to the patient for future reference, as well as a consent form disclosing the credentials of the pharmacist administering the vaccination. The VIS and consent form should be provided to the patient prior to administering the vaccination so that the patient can make an informed decision. Be it further resolved that this administrative resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption, introduced by the County Council of Talbot County, Maryland, at a regular meeting on September 26, 2023, at which meeting copies were made available to the public for inspection. Adopted by the County Council of Talbot County, Maryland, at a regular meeting on September 26, 2023, at which meeting copies were made available to the public for inspection. Given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this 26th day of September in the year of our Lord, 2023.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good job. Um, discussion? Lesher? Okay. Mr. Step?
Yeah, I'd love to, love to take a moment to just review this. Um, so this is a piece of legislation that I introduced, uh, or introducing today. I, I wanted to give a quick, a brief little history about how we got to where we are today. So, back on August 25th, I believe it is, of 2020, uh, there was an enforcement resolution that came down based on an unconstitutional mandate from the state of Maryland that our county council here adopted, um, by a vote, vote of measure three to two. I did want to take a moment to thank Mr. Lesher for his objection to this, uh, to this piece of legislation back in 2020. So, Pete, thank you for, uh, thank you for that. Fast forward here to February 14th of this year, uh, we put forth a resolution that was passed as unanimously as this council here, five to nothing, repealing, uh, all of that, uh, that resolution itself. So, fast forward to today, uh, this introduced, this is being introduced to basically just give folks their rights and freedoms back, right? That's basically what this is all about. This is not saying that you, you, you have to do this, you have to do that. This is not saying you can't wear a mask if you so choose to. This is not saying you don't have to be vaccinated, or you don't, you don't have to be vaccinated. So, be just regular folks, citizens, students, worshippers, businesses, all of the above. So that's what this legislation is about. So, Mr. Callahan, thank you.
Yep, yep, no problem.
Yes. I'm, I'm not supportive of this resolution. I will say that I was, I never drank the Dr. Fauci Kool-Aid, so I'm not coming from that standpoint. But it seems to me that this is just stating what the law is, but in one, that is reciting the COMAR regulations, but in one important aspect, this resolution does not really reflect what the law is in the state of Maryland. And Maryland Code of Regulations, COMAR 10 dot 06 dot 04 dot 05, says that the exemption for religious beliefs and practices does not apply when the secretary declares an emergency or epidemic of disease. So this proposed resolution is inconsistent with the law of the state of Maryland. And for that reason, I oppose it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Milkie.
Could I have one more president?
Yeah, sure. Sure. Go ahead.
So, you know, obviously this bill is going to have my full support. That's basically because we took a, we took an oath when we took office here to uphold the Constitution of the U.S. as well as state of Maryland, and, you know, as well as the laws of the state of Maryland. But I think in anyone that, you know, is looking at this, being an unconstitutional mandate, we have a duty to uphold the Constitution before we do any unjust laws.
Okay. Okay, Mrs. Hayth?
Yeah. Is Patrick there tonight?
Yep, yep, sure, he's here. Yep.
Oh, okay. So Patrick, in regards to what Lynn said, is that, you know, is that the truth? I mean, I'm not saying is that the truth, I'm not saying that she's lying, but is that consistent? Would this be in opposition to the Maryland law?
I don't believe so, because what the, the recital says is that the county council respects and recognizes parental and student medical and religious rights pursuant to COMAR 10.06.04 and 10.06, I'm sorry, 10.06.04.04 and 10.06.04.05, which I think those regulations do speak to parental and student medical religious rights. So that's, that's really all it says. I don't think it's inconsistent with those regulations.
Yeah, and, and to actually, while we're on COMAR, in the last section here, we read about, about the vaccine information sheets, that obviously that was, you know, stemmed from, you know, my personal experience that we're over there, so, or over at the Marlboro, you know, vaccination center. Hence the reason we're looking into this and making sure that's included in this legislation and make sure that we know we are going to stand with, you know, a state law that's protecting folks as they get a vaccine. We want to make sure they are protected and they are getting the right that they, or the, the information that they are, that they are due by state law.
Okay.
I've been taking all of this into consideration, you know. The fact of the matter is, we act as the Board of Public Health when any type of pandemic comes down. And none of us know, knows what the future is going to hold. And regardless if it's a mandate or a law, federal and state law supersedes our local laws and decisions anyway. And so, you know, when we, you know, talk about the Constitution, and Dave and I have discussed it, in addition to us, you know, talking about Christianity and being believers, we must obey the laws of the land. I mean, that is something that we must do. So if we say that we are in accordance with that as believers and Christians, then that's what we're going to do, and we have to do that. And I don't think we can foresee the future to put something like this in place if we were to have a pandemic next year and then something is handed down at a federal or, or state law, then we wouldn't be in compliance as the Board of, of Public Health. Or would we? Patrick, I guess this would be a question for you.
Okay. Okay.
I think she asked him a question.
I'm sorry, Clay was asking me a question. I didn't hear the council member's question. I'm sorry, Ms. Hayth, could you please repeat your question?
You were talking while I was speaking?
No. I'm sorry, Clay was, Clay was asking me a question, I apologize.
Oh, so Clay was talking while I was? Note to self, my question was, it, as acting as the Board of Public Health, in which we do, the county council, if something was to come down from a federal or state level, say next year, pandemic, or whatever the case may be, would, by adopting something like this, would we be in compliance with state and federal law, or will we be in opposition to that? Because federal and state law supersedes our local law. Don't understand the question?
No, I understand the question.
Is it a lot in that question?
He's, he's, he's got, give him a minute, he can answer it.
I would say, I mean, this, this is an administrative resolution. It, it, as, as council member Step said, it's, it's not requiring anything or prohibiting anything. It's, it's just, it's really just a statement of policy. So it's not, it's not law. So that, if that helps clarify your, your question or concern.
Yes. So I'm on speakerphone, but I'm actually watching you guys on TV, so I could see your face.
If it's not law, then what's the point of having this resolution? And my point is that if you're going to have this resolution, you might as well state what the law you're referring to states, because the section that says that the county council respects and recognizes parental and student medical religious rights pursuant to the section, the COMAR sections, that's all it's saying. It's not going on to say, but that is overridden if this, the secretary of the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene declares an emergency. So why is that omitted from this proposed administrative resolution? It should say, state that so it's not misleading to the public. That's my point.
Okay.
Do you want me to address that?
Yeah, if you would.
Again, I think, you know, it's, those, those regulations speak to parental and student medical religious rights. So that's just saying we're respecting. I mean, I, of course, if the, if there's an emergency and those vaccinations.
But it should state, what's, what's the problem with stating the, the entire section of COMAR that says, but that doesn't apply if there is a state emergency declared? That's my point. That's my only point, because I, you should be transparent, and if you're going to put this out there for the public to rely on, it should have all the facts. That's my point.
Okay.
So nobody's misled.
Okay. Counsel, any other discussion?
Just, you know, it's clear that, that there's no imminence to a problem that we're addressing here. We've heard from our health officer this evening that there is no discussion of any such mandates coming down from the state for this respiratory virus season for COVID or, or anything else. This, well, it is true that with an administrative resolution, what this council can impose, it can also repeal. Two weeks later, there, there's nothing, there's no permanence about such a thing. But it could make us less agile in the future should, should a need arise. We would have to actually act.
Could I conclude with one last statement?
Sure.
All right. Last statement. Constitutional rights are not suspended due to any emergency. They are, they are.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion for, for counsel?
Motion to approve?
Okay.
Has this been introduced?
You don't have to with administrative resolution.
No, no introductions required. No sponsor.
Not for administrative resolution.
Okay, right. All right, Madam Secretary, is there, well, first of all, is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Nay.
Ms. Milkie?
Nay.
Ms. Hayth?
Nay.
Okay. All right. All right, let's, let's move on. Okay, Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and, next agenda, please, public hearing?
No. It's introduction of numbered resolutions?
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah.
A resolution to place questions on the ballot at the 2024 general election to amend Section 102 of the Charter of Talbot County to provide that the citizens of Talbot County shall be accorded equal treatment in all matters under the jurisdiction of the county government regardless of age, disability, health, or genetic information, in addition to race, creed, sex, or national origin.
Okay. All right. Mr. Thomas, you want to go ahead and start us off on that?
I defer to council member Step on the substance of the, the proposed resolution, but just to speak to a little bit about the process.
Okay.
Because this is a resolution proposing to amend the charter.
Right.
So tonight, reading by title only, then we'd have a public hearing. It requires a four-fifths vote, at least a four-fifths vote of the council to be adopted, in which case it would then go to the ballot of the 2024 presidential election for voters in the county.
I got you. Okay. That'd be great. Okay. And Mr. Step, you want to go ahead and comment on this?
Yeah, as, as Patrick just mentioned, that's basically the process, how this is. So we were introducing this today. It would require a vote of four-fifths by the council, but this will go to, keep me, keep me honest here, this goes, this is a number of resolutions, so this is going to go to public hearing before?
Yes.
Okay. So we will have public hearings on this?
Mm-hmm.
And then it will go to, if passed by four-fifths, it will go to the ballot for folks to, to look at on the, as a referendum question. Basically, we're, we're adding, you know, anti-discriminatory clauses for age, disability, health, and genetic information. We already have on there, race, creed, or religion, sex, national origin. We would just be adding those, those four, those four, those four items to the county charter.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Raise your hand for introduction?
Oh, I have a question.
Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
And this is probably for Patrick, too. So under the, so under the Genetic Information Act that was adopted in 2008, under the EEO, would we, would Talbot County already be included under that, since the EEO is our hierarchy for any type of complaint regarding the genetic information, or age, or sex, et cetera?
I will have to look at that. I'm not familiar with that EEO that you mentioned, so I'd have to look at that, and I could address that later with you.
So my, my question, okay, so in addition to that, would we have to do a charter amended, amendment if we're already covered under EEO federally?
Well, some of these are already covered, are already covered as well, that are, that are currently in the charter.
Right. Right, okay.
Yeah, current.
And they're covered federally, too.
Yeah, Keesha, currently, under, under the existing charter in Section 102, it's race, creed, sex, and national origin, we'd be adding age, disability, health, and genetic information.
Age, disability, and what was the other one?
Health and genetic information.
Okay, got it. But the age and the disability is already under federal law? Is that correct, Patrick?
I believe the existing, the existing language speaks to race, creed, sex, national origin are already covered.
So, Mr. Thomas, those are, those items are covered in employment law?
Yes.
Though we, we're not restricting these to employment in this language.
Yeah, this speaks to the, that the citizens of Talbot, when the exercise of the powers under the charter, that the citizens are afforded equal treatment in all matters under the jurisdiction of the county government regardless of those items.
Is one of those matters, say, the right to vote in county and school board elections?
Not specifically mentioned here, no.
No, but that would be a right.
Sure.
If we prohibit discrimination by age, does that mean that, let's say, an engaged 14 or 15-year-old could not be denied the franchise in local elections? Just, you don't need to answer that now, but it's something, something perhaps to research as we move this along.
Certainly.
Any other discussion? Okay.
Ms. Hayth, did Ms. Hayth want to introduce it, or?
Yep. Ms. Hayth, did you want to introduce this?
I thought Dave introduced it.
He did. And I did.
Oh.
And I did. We couldn't see your hand.
Oh, two of you.
Say that again?
Dave, you and Dave introduced it, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'm good.
Okay. That means yes, I'm assuming.
Does that mean yes?
Is that a yes or no?
Does that, does that mean yes or no?
Oh, no, I'm not introducing it.
Okay.
Yes, I'm good with the two of you introducing it.
Okay, okay. Okay. All right, all right, no problem.
This, this will be known as Resolution Number 350, and the public hearing will be held on Tuesday, October 24th, at 6:30 p.m.
Okay. All right, that sounds good. Thank you. Okay, now we're on, under, of the discussion regarding the public hearing on Resolution 338.
Let me read it.
Yes, if you, if you would, please.
Resolution Number 338, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for Consistency with Discharge Permit 19DP 3460 issued by the Maryland Department of the Environment on October 27th, 2022, and to require that any future expansion of the new Lakeside Wastewater Treatment Plant shall require an amendment to the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan.
Okay. Do we want to read the next one? Yep.
Resolution Number 347, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to provide the equivalent dwelling units for all phases of the Lakeside development.
Okay. And Resolution 348?
Resolution Number 348, a resolution regarding the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to clarify and confirm the water and sewer classifications of certain parcels incorrectly shown in Exhibits A and B to Resolution Number 281 as amended.
Okay. All right, I appreciate that. Good job. Mr. Thomas, you want to go ahead and go over, run through this for us?
Sure.
So everybody understands what we're doing here?
Yes, so the council introduced Resolutions 347, 348 at its last meeting, and those were scheduled for public hearings on October the 10th. As you recall, council member Milkie also introduced Resolution 338 in the spring. That had gone before the Public Works Advisory Board, who reviewed and recommended, however, did not go to the Planning Commission. It is going to the Planning Commission next, next week.
Okay. Good, great.
So council member Milkie, and she can address some of this as well, expressed interest in having another public hearing after the public has had the benefit of having both the Public Works Advisory Board and Planning Commission recommendations to, to speak on, on that resolution. And also having, because all three relate to Trap and Lakeside, and having all three heard at the same time, which would require the, because we can't meet the public hearing notice for, for the 10th on 338, we need to move all three, we need to schedule a here, a second hearing on 338, we need to move the public hearings for 347 and 348 back to October 24th.
Okay.
So that they could all three be heard and acted on at that date.
I got you. Okay. All right. Okay. Any, any other?
The reason I suggested that is, we have three pending motions.
Right.
Or, or resolutions regarding Lakeside, and they have to all be he, heard and considered together, both in public comment.
I got you.
And, and voting.
Okay.
And also, I wanted to mention that I had discussed with, with Patrick, doing a, an amendment to 347.
347, yes.
347. And that is going to be forwarded to Brennan and Ray, Planning Commission and other boards. Basically, was just taking, was taking out a sentence, or actually a clause.
Was taking out a sentence, or actually a clause. And I don't have that right here. Do you have it handy, Patrick?
I do, bear with me one second, I'll pull it up.
Yeah, there's a phrase in both, in the Exhibit A, both under the water system and the sewer system, that says, it addresses the phases of the project. And what I'm proposing is to delete the segment that says, "The phases represent defined land uses only and do not represent the timing or sequence of development provided," provided, however, that all. And to take that provision out and just have it, "All phases of the Lakeside development or portions thereof classified as W2, or W3, or S2, or S3 shall be reclassified as W1 or S1," through an amendment to the plan before receiving either the water or sewer service from the town of TRAP. So it's like, no teaming.
No, no teaming.
No teaming.
Okay, all right, that's good. All right, any other discussions?
Just my support and agreement that these are clearly related pieces of legislation, and I think it makes sense to pull the public hearings in all three together on one date, and if that pushes us back to the 24th, I don't think that does any harm to our forward progress with our response to the Maryland Department of the Environment in moving these forward.
Okay, Keesha, you want to comment? You okay?
Yeah, I'm good, I mean, I agree with what Pete says. I mean, put them all... I mean, if we can just put them all together so that it's a public hearing, and the public can, you know, have their comments at the same time on all of these matters, I think it's better for, you know, the public and the constituents as well.
Okay, that sounds good. All right, so I'm assuming, Madam Secretary, we don't need anything, we can move on, correct? Okay, good, all right. Okay, next would be council discussion on proposed amendment for the educational article on 2024 legislative session. Yep, so I was just waiting for you to...
Yes, sorry, I was making it here.
No problem, no problem.
The... This arises out of the recent vacancy on the county Board of Education, and some of the concern that arose with that. Because under state law, as it currently stands, when there's a vacancy on the... In Talbot County, when there's a vacancy on the Board of Education, it's filled by the governor. So Councilmember Step expressed interest in putting forth a request to our local delegation to put forth a prefile bill to change that, so that the vacancy would be filled by the county council. So that would require, you know, a consensus of the council and to send a letter requesting that, along with a draft bill, to the local delegation to prefile for the 2024 legislative session. And I believe Councilmember Milkie also has some thoughts on that as well that she may want to address.
Okay.
Yeah, my thought is not that I'm necessarily opposed to what Councilman Step has suggested. That is, I think it should be taken from the hands of the governor, and it should be a local decision. I just think it would be better if it were subject to a special election for the replacement person from that ward. Because I think that it's very important that the citizens of the district where that person is from should have the input and the control, and they would best know the person who would serve in that position. So I want to do a resolution that... Not a resolution, but I guess a resolution.
Letter of support.
Letter of support to our delegates that we would hold a special election. I think it's analogous, I think there's at least one county that has something similar to that. But I just think it's more transparent, and it's more satisfying to the district that is affected by the vacancy to have control over it.
Good point. Any other discussion?
Well, it's, you know, it's hard to argue against the enfranchisement of voters and putting the choice in the hands of the voters. I think that that sounds like a terrific idea, and I want to thank Senator Mounts for his interest in supporting this kind of local decision-making in filling these vacancies. They don't happen very often, but we have one right now. And, well, that vacancy is going to get filled under the current mechanism. There will inevitably be one again sometime in the future, and it's good that he's willing to prefile a bill to address this and put local control over these decisions.
Yeah, well, as it is right now, so not only do we have Senator Mounts' support, but we also have Delegate Adams, as well as Delegate Hutchinson's support. We have their agreement to not only prefile such legislation, but also cross-file for the 2024 legislative session. So this language is basically almost verbatim of what our neighboring counties, other neighboring counties have, i.e. Dorchester is, I believe this is the language we used. What this does, just so everyone knows, this basically gives us the availability to put this on the ballot, or I'm sorry, put this on the state legislatures for 2024. If approved, what that does, then that gives us, as the county council, the authority to come up with a process, right? This doesn't define the process at this point, this just allows the process to happen under state election law. So we would have the opportunity, as I mentioned in our open session with the Board of Education last Tuesday, we would, of course, want to work close with them. It is their board seat, so that way we can nominate someone who would be appropriate that we know. You know, I just don't think it's appropriate for any governor, whether it's Republican, Democrat, independent, you know, they don't know our local folks like we know our local folks, and we want to make sure we're keeping those decisions as local as possible.
Okay. So can we work on drafting language to substitute the special election in lieu of the council appointment?
Yeah, that's the well of the majority of the council, absolutely.
Yes.
I'd certainly support that modification.
Well, what we're doing right now is getting it right for, to go to Annapolis, correct?
Yes.
That's all we're doing right now.
But what language are we asking of our Annapolis delegation?
That's the process, isn't it?
Well...
Well, whatever we send to them is what the process would be. That's what's going to go on state legislature, right? So as it reads right now, the changes that we've requested to the... We've requested to be made, in the event of a vacancy on the county board, the county council shall appoint a new member from the district in which the vacancy exists to fill the vacancy. And then also, again, it just points to the county council as the one who would be making that decision. So, I mean, if we have a special election, I mean, we're not sure what that would cost us, you know, and how long that process would take to do, as opposed to our appointment process, which should be able to move a lot, you know, a lot smoother. And again, it's not like we're saying, we just want to be the ones who are making that choice. We want to involve the Board of Education, we want to have, you know, educated dialogue about who we should select and put in place, so...
Well, could we research alternate language that perhaps would require a 60-day special election following a vacancy, or something to that effect?
Yes, my thought was with Councilmember Milkie's proposed change, that I could draft another version, and therefore, at your next meeting, you would have both versions in front of you, and you could decide which direction you would take. You know, one thing to consider with the special election is coordinating this with our county board of elections to make sure that whatever we come up with is some... And if it ultimately gets passed, it's something they can accommodate, so...
Absolutely.
We want to do that as well, and make sure that what we bring back is workable from their perspective.
Sure.
So I can work with Councilmember Milkie on that, and with the board, and have another proposal for you to consider, along with Councilmember Step's at your next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, Keesha, you want to comment on this?
Yeah, I'm just going to say that, you know, I totally, you know, I agree with Dave in his comment and stating that, you know, the governor doesn't know this community, we want to definitely take it out of the governor's hand, any governor. We don't want it to be political in any way. So I agree with that. In the same manner, I also agree that any time we have the ability to give the people an option to vote, to choose who they want in their district or their community, you know, I'll always go back to the people. The people need to decide who they put in as elected officials, and, you know, the government doesn't necessarily have to have or make that decision for the people, because we've seen many times where it's something, you know, where an appointment is done, and the people are not happy with whoever the government body was that puts the person in place. So, you know, if we could get that information in regards to how it would proceed either way, the way Dave is proposing, and also what's been brought up by Councilwoman Milkie, that would be great, so that we can look at both options. But again, giving it to the people and letting them decide, you know, I'm always all for that, them exercising their constitutional rights.
Okay, thank you, well...
Just, there might be more than one way to skin this cat, you know. I'd prefer the special election route, but if it need be an appointment, and if it need be... And if it's better made locally than by the governor, which I agree with.
Yeah.
Should, for example, the school board make that selection rather than... Which is a nonpartisan board, rather than this county council.
Right, I would agree. I think we're close to agreement, all of us, so let's spend the next week, couple weeks, putting something together for all of us, and see if we all can get there.
Yes, we'll have something ready for the 10th.
Okay, be great. Okay. Next would be the update status of the American Rescue Plan Act. Where's Mary Kay? Is she out there?
Yeah, I think she's fine.
Is she? Okay, everybody talking, carrying on. There they are, they're coming, they're coming. You're welcome, ladies.
Well, hello.
How are you?
Good to see you twice today.
Good seeing you. Oh, okay.
We've got the whole crowd here today. There we go.
Okay, all right.
We ready?
All right, 10 minutes now.
Pardon?
10 minutes.
I have 410 slides.
That's okay, okay, okay. You talk fast, you talk fast.
I do, I do, but we are prepared, we're ready to go fast.
There you go.
So, we've been asked to give an update on the American Rescue Plan Act funding that we received from the federal government, and how we've allocated that. So I'm going to back up just a little bit for the benefit for those who were not here when the previous council made the approved allocations that we've done so far, so everyone will know how we got here. So, the American Rescue Plan Act was signed into law on March 11th, 2021. The coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds were made possible by the ARPA Act, American Rescue Plan Act, and every state, county, and municipality in the United States of America received funding. And Talbot County received just over $7.2 million. So, the first tranche we received in May 2021, and tranche is one of those French words that means payment, so, and we received that May 1st, 2021, and the second tranche came later in that year, I believe it was in September. So the thing that you need to know about this money is that we have to the end of 2024 to entail this money, and then to the end of 2026 to spend this money. So, we, your ARPA committee, we've tried to be really good stewards of this money, and we've taken a very conservative approach. So when the money became available, and lots of people came asking for it, we decided to ask the people of Talbot County how we should spend this money. And we did a survey in December of 2021, and we hired a beacon at Salisbury University to do the survey, and we had 634 people take the survey. They were from all over Talbot County. So we feel like we've got really great results, and there were six ways that we could spend this money according to the federal rule, and we all took all kinds of training, so we would know how to spend our money. And there were six categories, and there were infrastructure, public health, assistance to households and small businesses, tourism, and economic recovery. And our people listed infrastructure, public health, and assistance to households as the highest ranked. So we took this information, and we allocated these funds to a number of projects to be consistent with that. And we came before the council in March of 2022 and made those recommendations, and we agreed to spend 4.7 and change million dollars of what we had of that 7.2. Now, we want to update you on where we are on those projects that we funded. So they are a work in progress, so we have a lot of ongoing projects, and we're going to update you on those things. So the first thing, number one, with our people, was investments in infrastructure. And so broadband, 45% of the people who took the survey said that broadband was the thing that we should do. They called it transformational, you know, for the people. So we, and that was the highest ranked of all the things that was on our survey. So we allocated $1.75 million to continuing broadband expansion to the unserved and underserved in Talbot County. That's the Connect Talbot program, Eastern Utilities is our partner. You probably know these numbers, but for the benefit of the public, I'll say them again. We have completed more than 225 miles of construction. That's 1,750 locations have been, have broadband access that, who did not have it before, and 920 customers were connected. When complete, a total of 4,400 Talbot County locations will have access to broadband. Now, this money just augmented the USDA grant that we received, the 13.1 million dollars. And this project is so impressive that the United States Department of Agriculture Rural Utility Service brought their telecommunications unit to Talbot County last week to see the project underway, to watch the trenching going on, to see the line laid, all those things. Councilman Lesher was there, Councilwoman Hayth was there, and, you know, I talked to some of these people, and they were just so impressed with the project, and felt like the people of Talbot County were really benefiting. And they benefited, because they're the people who sit behind the computer and approve these loans and grants, and they had never seen the projects underway. They came to us to see that. We have what is one of the best projects in the United States. And then, we also approved $105,000 to make improvements to the failing septic system at Chesapeake Center. We completed that project in August of '22. Ray Clark was in charge of that, and he gave me that information, and the total cost was And so we were a little under budget on that, but that project is complete.
So those funds can be reallocated?
Yes, those funds can be reallocated. Now, I'm going to ask Mary Kay, who is Mary Kay Vertary, who is also on our committee, to talk about investments in public health.
I don't want to stop the...
You can.
Anything, okay? But just remind me, for the Chesapeake Center, on that renovation, is there a reason they're not hooked up to the town?
So they are, this is their facility that's out in the county.
I got you.
It's on St. Michael's Road.
I got you, okay.
There were...
Not in town?
Correct.
No, no, not in town.
This is the one down near Kirkham Station.
I got you, okay.
Right, and there were no other funds to make this happen?
No, no, that's fine, I just was, yeah, I just wanted to know where, that's all.
Thank you very much for having us this evening. First thing I'm going to talk about this evening is for the fire company grants. All seven of our Talbot County fire companies received funding through this program. The council allocated $500,000, and the first thing that was taken off the top of that is the council approved spending of $655,000 plus for the...
Sixty-five thousand.
Sorry, 65,000, for phone disposal and resupply throughout the county fire departments. So after taking that out, the balance was distributed equally to our six fire companies, and one-third of what each of those companies received went to Queen Anne Hillsborough, as they are eligible funds from other jurisdictions, so they've only received one-third of the funding. The fire companies were given general parameters for spending through the subrecipient agreements. We were looking for non expendable equipment. That's things that were not really disposable items, something that they could use for several years. several years, not a single-use item, and not for salaries, as most of our fire companies are volunteers. So we had several things that were permitted, such as turnout gear, tools, vehicles, support equipment, and things that were prohibited, personnel costs, training, and travel, those items. The approved expenditures so far, Easton has spent their full amount associated with purchasing a engine tanker. St. Michael's has purchased a pumper, and Queen Anne Hillsborough has purchased some items for turnout gear and other supplies that they needed. Tillman Island has purchased a UTV and a trailer. They still have a remaining balance left over. The full amounts for Easton, St. Michael's, and Queen Anne have been spent toward the purchase of those other items. And again, even though they were not fully supported with some of the things that they were trying to purchase, they were all very appreciative of the funds that they did receive through this program. I'm going to next turn it over to Brian to speak about some of the emergency management things.
Good evening. So the next item would be three hundred thousand dollars that was allocated to a new ambulance, so that is expected delivery in spring of '24. Right now, ambulances are about seven hundred, a build time, so as soon as we receive that, we'll invoice that out and we'll know the exact cost on that. The other item was, one million dollars was allocated in, as partial funding for the North Station for EMS that would be in the area of Chapel District Elementary School on Route 309. So that project is well underway and will be coming to council probably in the near future with a recommendation to procure property.
So the next item was for investments for the public goods, so I'm going to ask Nancy Andrews, exactly, to our Talbot Family Network to come up and speak of some of our food banks and other items.
Good evening, everyone. So a hundred and fifty thousand was invested in our existing food banks and, and meal distributors in Talbot County during FY '23. Just about fifty percent of those funds were spent by the seven standing Maryland Food Bank partners here in Talbot County, each receiving about ten thousand seven hundred dollars, and we expect to expend the balance of that during FY '24. Thank you. These are the pantries that funds were awarded to, from CarePacks to St. Vincent de Paul. And next slide. So we offer the, the food banks the opportunity to use the funds for several expenditures, with food being at the top of the list, but also recognizing that they have other costs to bear in their operation and infrastructure costs. I will say, of the monies expended so far, the bulk have gone to food costs, in part because pantries are seeing the same increase in food costs that we're seeing as individual consumers. Uh, next slide. Let me just say, I did want to add one other thing. I reached out to the food pantries just to get a little update from where they are, and they really asked me to pass along their appreciation to help you understand the impact that this is making in our community. Most of our pantries rely largely on volunteer help to make their operations possible. St. Vincent de Paul shared that from January to May of 2023, from the, that time period and the year prior, they've seen a forty-three percent increase in households coming to their pantries. They now have to buy milk. Previously, grocery stores were providing that to them on a donated basis during COVID. They're now paying, well, they were paying seventeen hundred dollars a month to purchase milk, they're now paying twenty-two hundred dollars a month just to purchase milk. Harvest of Hope at the Eastern Church of God says they've seen triple the number of people coming to be served each week. They're purchasing groceries from our local grocery store and really trying to build some creative relationships there to augment what they're able to purchase from Maryland Food Bank, because the selection is down with Maryland Food Bank. The pantry at Brookless Paste, run by St. Mark's United Methodist Church, they're spending about four thousand dollars a month with the Maryland Food Bank, and they expect this cost to go up to six thousand to seven thousand dollars a month by the end of the year, based on increased need and rising costs. And then I just want to point out to you on the list, Royal Oak United Methodist Church, they are only twenty-four-seven food pantry in the county. They have a, a self-help pantry in the vestibule of the church, and what J.R. Burkhart, who's a guidance counselor at Talbot County Public Schools, and really is a lead person with many volunteers at that congregation, says, they really see the greatest use of that pantry at night, when it's dark, community members who haven't had to ask for help before have the opportunity to go in there. J.R. Perdikely shared with me that he's seen students from school that he wasn't aware, maybe were experiencing food insecurity at home, coming across with a backpack, saying, Mom, Dad, or Grandmom sent me over to get dinner for the evening. So thank you for your investment in our food pantries.
The next item is for our nonprofits. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars was allocated for our nonprofits. Selecting criteria of focus on economic recovery, health services and housing, and projects to assist the underserved. We had nearly sixty applications requesting one point two million dollars, which was a very challenging process to narrow that down to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars cap that we had, and we ended up selecting sixteen recipients. And even with, based on what they had requested, it was well over the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar cap. So we funded each one of those sixteen at seventy-five percent of their requests, so that we were able to help as many people as we could, many nonprofits as we could, instead of just fully funding a lesser number. So we funded sixteen recipients at seventy-five percent. And again, although they did not receive the full request that they had asked for, they were all very, very appreciative of the funding that they did receive. We ha, we do have now eight nonprofits that have fully spent their money, one of them was paid today, and we have three that are pending on my desk to receive money, so of the sixteen, we're trying to get each of those served. Some of the projects that were funded were sewer line installations, at a low-income housing project, purchase of a cargo van for food distribution, staffing and training expenses, and that's including teachers, nurses, therapists, and other specialty salaries, and community arts project. And I'll switch it back to Cassandra.
All right, and I'll bring it home. So one of the other projects that, that we funded was the Talbot County Free Libraries' new sound system. As you know, we all use that room over there, and so they've added equipment that really brings it up to 2023 standards. The installation is nearing completion. I spoke to Dana this week. They have not spent any of this money yet, however, we expect their invoice within the next couple of weeks on this project. And then we'll switch to Talbot County government projects. We advised and were approved for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for Talbot County's IT cybersecurity project. I spoke to Tommy today just before our previous meeting, and he tells me that he is well underway with this and expects to, to spend at least that much and more on securing our systems here in Talbot County. He, he has spent sixty-five thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars to date. We also allocated ten thousand dollars for the Chesapeake Multicultural Resource Center Call Center. That's something that we supported during COVID and agreed to support again. That project is complete. It was, it came in at twelve thousand three hundred and twenty-three, it's a little bit over, but as you saw, we have a little bit extra in some of our other line items. And then we also allocated two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for administrative costs. We've spent thirty-nine thousand three hundred and one. That includes our survey and our previous grants manager. We expect that we will spend this before the end of 2026. And this was not approved at the March meeting, but came in for the November twenty-two, twenty-second, November twenty-two meeting, sorry, for the replacement of fifty existing and fourteen new affordable housing units at Doverbrook Apartments. And this is something that the town of, it's a much more expensive project than that, as you know, but the town of Easton has matched us, two hundred and fifty thousand for two hundred and fifty thousand. We think that's a great investment in housing here in Easton. So again, we approved four million seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and forty dollars, and so far we have spent two million four hundred and fifty-six thousand six hundred and sixteen and twenty cents. And our balance that remains is two million four hundred and sixty-three thousand five hundred and thirty-three point oh four. So that is where we are. I want to give a shout out to the working group who has worked on this for a couple of years now, and that includes Councilman Pete Lesher, so thank you for your leadership on this, Clay Sapp and Jessica Morris from the County Manager's Office, Martha Sparks and Caitlin Foster-Clark from the Finance Office, Mary Kay, of course, Nancy Andrew on the public assistant side, Ray Clark for infrastructure, and Cassandra Van Hooser for small business and tourism. So we are your working committee. If you have any questions, many of us are here, and we're happy to answer your questions. And that was just over ten minutes.
Just, around twelve minutes.
Twelve, okay.
Twelve, that's great. Okay, council, discussion?
Thank you.
Yep, yep. Mr. Lesher, this is, this is the spotlight on you.
Well, I, I.
You did a good job.
I will, I will echo the thanks that, that Cassandra expressed for, to the committee for, for guiding this project through. I know that the committee is compiling further requests and weighing those against the, the priorities that, that were set in the public survey process, and, and those will, of course, be, be forthcoming in a, in a timely manner.
And, and good job.
Thank you.
Yep.
What an undertaking.
Yes.
It has been.
Yep, yep.
You're all sort of like ducks. You don't see, you're underneath the water, but you're just cruising along, getting this done. Fabulous.
Yep, yep.
So it's a blessing to have extra resources, but it is a burden to try and, and a, a challenge and an opportunity to try and allocate them appropriately. So we're your team, doing our best to make that happen.
Yep, yep. Hey, Keisha, you want to comment?
Um, no, just that they did a great job. Thank you, guys.
That's great. Well, we really appreciate, you go ahead.
One, just one further thought. This, of course, is a, a one-time, non-renewable source of funds, and, and while I think the reaction in some other jurisdictions was to, the expression has been used, to shovel money out of the helicopter. We, we have been trying to be very prudent about this, to adhere to the publicly identified priorities and to be, to be prudent about funding items that will, will make a, a long-term difference in, in this community that are, that are investment, investments in this place and its, its people.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Appreciate it.
And I'm going to yield the floor to Ms. Verderi.
Okay.
That's why she's next.
Yep, she is next. Okay. Okay, now we're, we're, it's five-thirty here, we can start the public hearing, you know what I mean? That's perfect.
Right on time.
Exactly. Okay, you want to give us an update then?
I sure am.
Yep.
So this is an update on the Early Head Start project, which was a project that received community development grant funding. I'm not sure if Maria McQuaid and Jamila are here, so if they want to, I'll let them sit together. And Jamila Witt are here. They are the director of the program, and of course, the health officer that's in charge of the program.
Yep.
I just wanted to introduce Jamila Witt, so she's our new director of family programs at the department.
That's great. That's great, you're welcome.
Twenty-five years.
Yep.
So Wendy Deal was the one that we had been working with throughout this program, and she has retired, so it's a pleasure to be working with Jamila.
That's great.
She's been very helpful to us.
That's great.
So the Early Head Start program offers comprehensive early care, education, and family support services to children and their families as they progress from the Early Head Start to the Eastern Elementary School, all on one campus. This creates a shared centrally-located resource and continuous care for our toddlers. As you can see, this is the project when it was under construction, and now a picture of the completed, newly renovated building. The renovation project received eight hundred thousand dollars in CDBG funding, with the county supplementing the additional cost for over one point two million dollars for the total project. And the facility is funded to serve up to sixty-five Talbot County infants and toddlers from birth, or approximately six weeks to three years of age, and they're currently serving thirty-six children daily. They retain four classrooms for the nineteen fifty-eight Dobson Building, which had been slated for demolition. And three of these classrooms are divided into two learning spaces each, and as you can see, they're set up based on the age of the children. They have cribs and different activities for kids based on their age, age-appropriate. So the toddler spaces have age-appropriate toys and age-appropriate learning materials. This is just an example of how the spaces are divided and able to provide twice the amount of classroom space by dividing those. The fourth classroom space was converted into a kitchen area. They receive new kitchen appliances and are able to provide meals to the children. They also have a new laundry area and a bathroom with the facilities that are sized for toddlers that are learning potty training, so that potty is eleven inches off the ground. So they are always keeping the children in mind as they were constructing this new facility. They, after the interior project was complete, Early Head Start Family Support Center installed a playground equipment for children from crawlers to the preschooler age. A few facts about the Early Head Start is they have a hundred percent of the enrolled children are up to date on the immunization and healthcare. The care and education services also provide for children with development delays and disabilities. All children receive free meal services to include baby formula and baby food, as well as lunch and snacks for the older toddlers. One more thing before I get to the thank you here is, the Council of State Community Development Agencies met in Baltimore, Maryland this year, and they meet in a different state every year. So they had representatives from over forty states come to Maryland. The Maryland CDBG Program, Department of Housing and Community Development, chose to come over here to Talbot County, in the town of Easton, to have all of those state representatives view our projects. So I think it was a great honor for them to come over, and Early Head Start was one of the projects that they were able to visit. They were very impressed with the project, and the employees were very helpful in answering the questions and helping them through the description of how they use the funds and how successful the CDBD program was for their project. So I appreciate Early Head Start, helping us have busloads of people come in, while they had students there that were taking naps and doing different things, and they were very receptive of us coming in and learning about their facility. So thank you to Early Head Start, Family Support Center staff. Thank you to the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development, and also thank you to the County Council for supporting the funding for this project.
Okay, that's great. Any other? Okay.
Yeah, anything else you want to add?
We're just grateful for the continued support of the county in, in these facilities, and it really helps the county so much to provide the space, and again, that shared birth through, what, fifth grade, all on one campus makes, makes such a difference.
Okay, that'd be great. Okay, thank you. So, so it's a public hearing. So I'll open it up to the floor. If anybody wants to come on up and talk about the project, I'll give you three minutes, and if you're representing somebody, you can stay up here for five minutes. So is there anybody here on, on my left side that'd like to come up and talk about it? Okay, about here on, on the right side? Okay. All right, I think, I think you guys are doing a good job, so, okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and open it to the floor discussion.
I'm just, congratulations to, to your, your guidance, your, in your new role here for this project, and, and thank you for, for moving this along and making sure that these costs get covered for what is clearly a, a crucial facility for the, for the community.
Thank you.
Yep, yep.
What Pete said.
Yep, yep, yep. Okay, okay. Casey, you want to say anything, or are you good?
I'm good, thank you, Chuck.
Okay, no problem. Okay, all right, anybody else? Okay, all right, I'm sorry.
Just Dave?
So, yeah, I looked at him. I looked at him.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, okay.
It's getting late.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. So that's all we have to do. That's good.
Thank you very much again for your support.
Okay, thank you, guys. Okay, appreciate it. Okay, all right, next on the agenda, we got our Finance Director, Mrs. Sparks to come on up here, this update on everything. She's been waiting patiently for two and a half hours, you know, she's, you know? You know? Brings us up to speed on everything, on FY twenty-three, on the real estate.
Sure will. My name's Martha Sparks. I'm the finance director in Talbot County. What you have here before you, council, are real property tax abatement requests. In accordance with Maryland code, Talbot County abates the real property taxes related to various not-for-profit organizations that own property in the county. The list that you've been provided is totals tax abatements of one-hundred-and-one-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars and four cents, and I'm asking council to approve the requests for the real property tax abatements.
Okay.
And if an organization has something that's in current use, it automatically gets that. These are generally parcels that are owned by nonprofit, designated for future use, and therefore don't have the automatic exemption and therefore require our action for an abatement?
Well, actually, there's two things. I should say, the memo that I sent to you had the incorrect code reference. There are some that are in the code that are, Talbot County shall provide the tax abatement, and those are mandatory. And then there are others that Talbot County may provide. The shall or the mandatory tax abatements are for Academy of the Arts, Bailey's Next Parks Association, Maryland Ornithological Society Incorporated, Tuckahoe Steam and Gas Association. The councils, at councils' will, where Talbot County may grant, are Chesapeake Audubon Society, Chesapeake Wildlife Heritage, any commercial or industrial businesses that are currently or will be doing business in Talbot County, Habitat for Humanity of Talbot and Dorchester Counties.
Okay. All right. So, okay, is there a motion?
I'll move for the tax abatements.
Okay. Okay, we've got a motion second to go ahead and approve the outline abatements. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay, good job. Okay, next up, Brian, you want to come on up? You and Geneva? So, presentation of Talbot County Emergency Alert System.
Yes, good evening, council. Brian LaKeats, Director, Talbot County Emergency Services. So, I'm actually going to hand most of this over to Geneva to talk about our reverse, not what is affectionately known as our reverse nine-one-one. The platform is actually called Everbridge. We call it locally as Talbot Alert. So, it's known by many things, but at the core of it is reverse nine-one-one. It gives us the capability of reaching out to the community in emergencies or impending emergencies, and really communicating with our citizens and getting a message out to them rather quickly. So, I have Division Chief Geneva Shaffel here with me, and I have another person in the back, Dave Tyler, and he is with our Technical Services Division in case we have any really hard technical questions. He knows that system inside and out.
Right.
So, I'll turn it over to Geneva for a quick presentation.
And I want to say, I would like everybody to listen to this, okay? Because if there's anything that we needed, we needed it last weekend, okay? And you did a phenomenal job last weekend, so it's, you know, when we have these emergencies, we rely on you, and you're an expert in this field, so I appreciate it. But I wanted to tell everybody to pay close attention to what she's talking about.
Thank you very much, and thank you for having us. I will keep this brief because it's late, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yep.
So, Brian really said a good bit of it. We call it Talbot County Citizen Alert. The software that we use is known as Everbridge. It has two functions, our primary function being reverse nine-one-one, where able to reach the community in times of emergency. It also has an internal function that we use, our public safety agencies, for alerting each other, staffing, et cetera. The system is housed in DES, carries sign up for citizens. At the end, I'll give information on how to sign up. And it's for visitors, business, et cetera. You can customize the alerts that you receive. We'll go over what types of alerts those are. You can customize the location, so it's all location-based. As an agency, we're authorized to send Everbridge messages as well as wireless emergency alerts, so the Wia messages that come to your cell phone, as well as Emergency Alert System messages, the ones you see on your cable, TV, radio, et cetera. So, why is it important? So, it allows us to alert you of threats in your area. It also allows us to reach you with information before, during, and after disasters. We're very fortunate to partner with our National Weather Service with this software. So, if you sign up for our program, you are automatically tapped into National Weather Service weather alerts. They come automatically, and it's for the area that you submit. That's a huge function of theirs. We use it, everything from watches, alerts, advisories, et cetera. So, imminent threats in your area that we can reach you for, those would be law enforcement notifications, emergency road closures, missing persons, shelter-in-place emergencies. We partner with our public safety agencies. They can request to use the software through us and help get the message out to the citizens, wherever that might be. Other reasons that we might use would be for planned events that would have large impacts to the area. So, special events like our running festival, a major road closure for a period of time, things of that nature that are planned. And then finally, for the impending disaster information, usually in this realm, we think weather, so preparedness information, impacts to expect, evacuation information, how you can prepare. That's how our local officials are able to reach out to the public, as well as recovery information. So, post-disaster safety information, where you can get disaster services, things of that nature. So, how folks can sign up? There is a couple ways. One, on our website. You can visit www.talbotdes.org or talbotalerts.com. Both of those will take you to the landing page, where you can easily sign yourself up. You can choose what type of emergency alerts you'd like to receive for whatever that emergency. You can also sign up for the hours you'd like to receive them, like if you'd not like to receive them at night, just during work hours, et cetera. If you don't have access to online resources, you can also just call me, and you can call our office. We can happily manually set you up, just the same. We do it all the time, and we can also help adjust your settings as well.
So, Mr. Affleck, an example of somebody who might just do work hours might be somebody who lives in Anne Rundle County but works in Talbot County and only needs those alerts from Talbot County during those hours that they're here.
Correct. If they're signing up for here, we would suggest in that scenario, they put their work address, so they're only getting the alerts for their work address during those hours.
Right.
But that really is it? That's kind of a brief overview. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
And do you have a sense of, I mean, obviously, at one point, we relied on alerts on broadcast radio and television, but you obviously, by using multiple means, including text messages and such, you have the means of reaching far more people. Do you have a sense of what the penetration is, of what percentage of cell phones or households you reach?
Sure. I can give a brief overview, and then I'm going to tag Dave in if I miss something. So, I can give you an overview of our users, and that kind of gives us an idea of how they're receiving the message, et cetera. Today, we have about sixteen thousand Verizon landline numbers. That's not to say maybe a business has a couple numbers, et cetera, but that's landline. We have over four thousand people who self-registered online. We have another sixteen or sixteen-hundred people that also use our web portal, and those are residents. And then we have about seventy-five businesses that registered online, and then a little under twenty that have called us, and we manually registered. And those numbers also fluctuate. So, it is a reach. It's kind of hard to delineate between landline versus cellphone. Dave, did I cover that okay?
Yes. So, just a little history. We used to receive, well, we still do receive, information from Verizon on every landline in Talbot County, and we automatically have that information that's uploaded to the system. With the prevalence of cell phones, people are getting rid of landlines. So, that's great, but it hurts in this case. So, that's why we're really trying to promote people signing up on their own and registering their cellphone numbers. So, folks that have always had landlines are getting rid of them. Their only means of communication is now cellphone. We do not have the same access to wireless carriers to get that information, so it's all dependent on the community signing up. And if they don't sign up, we don't have that means to communicate in an emergency. So, that's why it's really important, and that's why we're here this evening, is really just spread that word and show the, really stress the importance of signing up for this. We're wrapping up September, which September is National Preparedness Month, so it's a perfect time for us to be here talking about this.
Any other discussion?
Just thank you for doing this, and I think that those, many of us, I think, who are signed up for this, have seen ample evidence in, just in recent weeks, of weather alerts, of a shooter-at-large alert, of missing persons. I mean, we've seen all these categories of alerts come through recently. We don't get bombarded. You clearly reserve it for the real emergencies, so that when the message comes through, we do pay attention. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate those comments.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll echo the same, just as far as my thanks. I mean, I know I've gotten three alerts in the last two weeks, right? The potential tornadoes, alerts, road closure, and then, of course, all the storms. So, not only thank you guys for keeping us abreast of everything throughout that time, but for alerts every time I see eighty-nine eleven come up, I know you guys are hard at work, so thank you.
Okay, Keisha? Keisha?
Yep, I'm here. I remember Clay mentioning this to me, and I have not signed up yet, so I will make sure that I do that and spread the word. So, thank you for presenting tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Good job.
Appreciate it.
Good job. Okay. All right, finally, Clay's off. Just one second. Yep. Okay.
I will talk real slow as well. Good evening, council. Under your county manager report this evening, we have a couple of committee and board appointments that I will be asking you about, and then I have three items and an announcement. So, the first one is regarding the Ethics Commission. There is one vacancy, asking council approval for Mr. Paul Daven to serve on the Ethics Commission.
I'll move the appointment of Paul Daven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
And the next involves the Upper Shore Workforce Investment Board requesting the appointment of Dr. James Bell for the private sector, and the reappointment of Mary Ellen Carter, private sector, and Reverend Eric Daniels, private sector.
I'll move the appointments as articulated by staff. Second?
We'll take our motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Thank you, council. Oh, Ms. Hayth.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. While Micah comes up, we have a request from the Eastern Airport for approval of design, review, and reimbursable agreement for instrument, for an instrument landing system at the Eastern Airport. I'm going to just turn it over to Micah and let him brief you, and I will pick up anything that he might miss. Thank you, Micah.
Thanks, Clay. Good evening, council. Thank you for your time. This is part of our overall airfield modernization program, and we accounted for these expenses in this year's budget. Essentially, what this is, is the FAA is the one who does the review. They own the ILS system, so they need to review the plans that we've put together to make sure it meets all their criteria for when we relocate the instrument landing system to the new location. So, essentially, what this is, is us entering into a reimbursable agreement with the National Aerospace System Planning Group to come out and review the plans, do a site survey, work together to make sure the ILS is properly planned for relocation. And then, once that work is done, this is an AIP reimbursable expense. So, we literally were paying them the money. Well, you know, they'll bill to it. Once the work is done, we will submit this fifty-four thousand dollars for reimbursement on a future grant. So, that's how that process works.
Okay.
So, we're asking council's approval to move forward with that project.
Okay.
So, moved.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Great job. Thank you.
Okay, one thing. So, we have Airport Day coming up.
Airport Day's coming up, October the fourteenth. Just a little overview. We've got over fifty planes flying, about forty-some more on the ramp, so it's about a hundred aircraft in play. It's going to be an exciting day out there. Placid Lassie's coming back, which is a D-Day veteran, so about fifty airplanes are going to fly at the same time. Fantastic day. And we have our groundbreaking ceremony on the thirteenth, that Friday before, at ten o'clock.
Right, and we're talking about groundbreaking. Are we talking about fence being put up this year?
We're, yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay, so I want to make sure everybody knows that.
Yeah, so as far as the impacts to the Talbot County Business Center, that parcel's what we're talking about. When the project begins here in coming weeks, some of the first things you'll see is a ten-foot fence that's going to be erected along the work boundaries of that parcel, so it'll basically encompass the Talbot County Business Center. That'll be the first visible thing that happens, and I expect that'll happen by the month of November.
Okay, sounds good. Got to save me a few phone calls.
And as far as that goes, too, I always want to say, our communication piece, easternairport.com, right there on the homepage, has all of our information. The community can sign up for text alerts, so if they want to know what's going on at the airport, they can go there, they can log in, and they can stay up to speed with our newsletter, and they'll get the information in real time.
Now, I appreciate that update. Thanks, Micah. Good job.
Thank you.
Yep.
Great, thank you, Micah. Next, I would call forward Mr. Cliff Coppersmith. He's the president of Chesapeake College. We have a request from Chesapeake College for a letter of intent to support a capital building project for the Queen Anne's Technical Center. As you read in your agenda packet, Chesapeake College is requesting council approval for a letter of intent from each of the supporting counties, Caroline, Dorchester, Kent, and Queen Anne, and Talbot County, for the Queen Anne's Technical Center project, which would assure that the Maryland Higher and Education Commission, that Talbot County intends to provide its local share of funding. Dr. Coppersmith and Ms. Smith are here to answer any questions. Design would begin in FY twenty-five, with construction FY twenty-six. Total cost of Talbot County would be four million, three-hundred-and-ten-thousand, five-hundred-and-one dollars and fifty-two cents. The floor is yours, Dr. Coppersmith.
Thank you, Clay. You did my job for me. Thank you very much.
I tried hard.
Mr. President, glad to be with you tonight. I started my morning with a similar meeting up in Kent, and I was very, I'm very happy to report that we had a unanimous vote of support for a letter of intent from Kent this morning. We also had a vote in the majority approving for Caroline as well. So, this is our last hurrah in terms of what I'm calling a Churchillian beginning of the end, or the ending of the beginning, in which we accomplished this first part of this very complicated process of getting a new facility to replace the Queen Anne's Technical Center, which I know some of you have been in there, so if you want to taste, smell, and see nineteen-seventy-six, you can go back and actually experience the whole thing in this facility, which has done its fair share for our students over the years, but it's in dire need of replacement. We also be replacing the use of the Manufacturing Trade Center, which is also where we do our skilled trades programs. So, this facility that we hope to construct will actually replace two buildings. The Queen Anne's Tech Building, if we do, and are successful, will come down, and that space will be turned over to green space, and the MTC would be converted to other uses. So, what I'm going to do is provide just a very brief overview of the project, and then Karen Smith, our chief finance officer, will take us through the funding pieces of this. And I'm also wanting to acknowledge the presence of our own Raza Jafari, Chair of the Board of Trustees, who's with us tonight in that function, but also as a representative trustee for the County of Talbot. So, the programs that will be housed in this facility include electrical welding, advanced manufacturing, which is a new program for us, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, HVAC, agriculture, the construction trades, marine trades, culinary, and skilled trades the construction trades, marine trades, culinary, and skilled trades offices for, you know, administration and faculty and support staff. We also will be locating the Small Business Development Center in this facility and the Center for Innovation Entrepreneurship, which will be a program for the college that links the skilled trades and other areas of the college that are appropriate to small business opportunities for practitioners in these disciplines, in these technical areas. And we also hope to move the WIB into that facility as well because much of the funding for tuition and fees for many of these students will come from the WIB as they have in the past. So the program statement that you have with you or in your packet does include basically the overall square footage for the, the facility, which is over ninety thousand square feet, of which fifty-two thousand square feet is usable space for classrooms and labs and offices and so forth, at a proj, a projected total cost of just over seventy-nine million dollars. You also have a project priority list that was assigned to us by MHEC through the, our peers and the other presidents and the Maryland Community College System, in which we were awarded a fairly high priorities placement of number six, with the four, first four projects already in either design or construction. So literally what this means is we're, we're the second priority project for the next phase, which would be actually funding and of course, the design piece. You have a, a statement there, which I'm gonna have Karen take us through, in which we have the percentages for each of the counties. And then she'll take us through the rest of the packet which you've had. And of course, I do wanna acknowledge that many of the council members were present for the all-county meeting we had just a week ago, in which all five counties discussed their support for this, um, project. I will tell you that Dorchester at this time, because of its own unique circumstances, cannot provide a letter of intent, but it is providing a letter of support, which has been delivered to us. So with that, I'm gonna hand this over to Karen for a discussion of the actual funding pieces.
Good evening. Um, the total project, as Dr. Coppersmith mentioned, is approximately seventy-nine million dollars. Um, it, there are three stages to the project. One is design, one is construction and contingency, and furniture and equipment. And we are lucky, as a regional community college, we get seventy-five percent funding from the state for an approved project, where the local support counties or the college or foundation funding would make up the twenty-five percent. Um, the share between the counties is based on population in the counties. Talbot's share is twenty-one point eight percent of the project. A project of this size would, um, the construction phase would probably go, uh, I have it on the table for over three years, but the construction phase could go anywhere from eighteen to twenty-two months for a project of this size. So Talbot's share at twenty-one point eight percent of the total project is a little over four million dollars. Um, the first phase is design and that would start, if approved and included in the governor's budget, would start, um, in July of twenty-five, which would be the, the next fiscal year. I don't know what we're at, what happened to the... Must've skipped a step. Sorry. This, this schedule, it shows the, um, faculty members that we have in place now to lead each of these program areas. So we have our, uh, foundation set in preparation of this new building and to build out these programs. Um, we have welding fabrication, um, construction technology, marine trades, transportation and logistics. Um, culinary is the one where you still have to fill. We fill that with adjunct professors right now. And we have a new, um, advanced manufacturing lead with Frank Williams. So what we are asking for from the county is actually a letter of support, um, just showing, um, your intent to support the project. Um, and the regular process for actually approving the funding of this project would go through the regular budget cycle, which would be the, it would come to the council in the springtime.
Just a clarification, I believe you meant that, uh, this is an FY twenty-five, um, item. FY twenty-five and twenty-six, FY twenty-five will begin next, um, it'd be July of twenty-four.
Yes.
Except twenty-five, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
I forgot.
I didn't say that.
Okay, okay.
Could I just, just, yeah, one question. So you, you mentioned Dorchester County in the, the letter of support versus intent. Um, and looking at the, the spreadsheet where, you know, each county's share, I'm assuming, number one, that's by, uh, population, that's how that percentage is figured out?
That's correct.
Okay. And then what, what happens to the other counties if, if they're, you know, not going to or do not intend to contribute for a letter of support versus intent? So...
Well, a letter of intent is non-binding. It simply reflects the intent of each county that submits one to proceed with the, the budgetary and other elements of the actual funding piece for each county. Uh, in this case, by Comar, uh, the Maryland Code, we, uh, we have a budget when you have three of our five counties vote to support both our annual budget, which happens every year, but also in this case, when you have a, a special appropriation of funded project. Uh, we certainly hope that Dorchester may eventually come along to support the project, but obviously, in their particular case, they simply cannot do it at this moment. So we anticipate, we have our meeting with the state on the, on Thursday and we do think that we'll, we'll get what we need from the state in terms of that process with four of our five counties submitting letters of intent. And then if needed, we, actually the college can cover the, the difference in effect if we have to with the state, with our own letter of intent for the college's sake, in which we would, you know, basically be able to indicate that we could provide additional financial support through capital campaign, existing donor allocation, and fund balance of our own.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Well, uh, it's clear that, that we've, we've seen in national news, we've seen in state discussions of, of educational needs, we've seen advocacy locally, how important technical and trades education is. Uh, what we, that, that the four-year college degree is not the right solution for everybody and that we need to have this option available. And so what the college is doing to, to bolster its already solid programs in this area and, and contribute this sort of training, this, this is absolutely invaluable and, and it is something that, that I believe that if, if, if we recognize those, those needs and, and I certainly do, I think this council does, uh, we need to support. And so, uh, I, I, I fully expect, I, I will, I will support this. Are we ready for a motion?
Not yet.
Not yet.
You want me to say? Keisha?
Yes, I'm here. So I'll just echo what Pete said and being a little biased as an alum of Chesapeake College. Um, community colleges play a critical role in our workforce development across the nation. And so we know that they have a broad mission to provide academic programming and skills training to prepare students for jobs or to transfer to a, to a four-year, um, college. So I'm glad to see this project is, you know, in the process of getting started. It's years in the making. I can remember when I started in economic development, we were talking about this type of building. So kudos to Chesapeake College and certainly, um, I will support a, a letter.
Okay. All right, um, I'm, I'm gonna back that up. I've been looking forward to this for ten years, okay? I mean, seriously, this is what I'm all about. And I'm very excited, I'm glad to be a part of it, and I think we've been needing this for years. And the construction world is finally on the map now, you know?
It totally is on the map.
Yeah, it is, it is. And I really appreciate you heading that up and I'm, I'm happy to be a part of it, that's for sure. So, being that said, Madam Secretary, um, or first of all, is there, there's a motion?
I'll, I'll, I'll move for the, um, letter of intent.
Yep, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, okay, um, Madam Secretary, there's a motion second for, um...
And a third.
Yep. Um, with a letter of intent for the Chesapeake College. Could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay.
Great.
You got it.
Mister President, this is our Super Tuesday. We're very appreciative of your support.
There you go, there you go.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you guys. Okay.
Congratulations.
Yep.
Okay, council, um, next we have, I would call Dr. DeShields for it. A, a pun intended, a very patient Dr. DeShields. Who's been waiting all evening. Uh, he's here this evening to ask council, um, uh, for a letter of support for the museum project and conveyance of preservation easement. As you read in your agenda packet, the Bellevue Passage Museum is requesting council approval for a letter of support to the Maryland Historical Trust confirming that if an African-American Heritage Preservation Program grant is awarded, the county, as the owner of the property, will consent to a preservation easement or easement modification on the property to enter into a preservation agreement. The county has completed a title search, which confirmed there are no less than fee simple interest in the property. And Dr. Dennis DeShields is here to answer any further questions that you may have regarding this matter. Thank you, sir. The floor is yours.
Thank you for allowing me to come again to speak with you.
Appreciate you being here.
I hope I'm not wearing my welcome mat. We, I, first of all, wanted to thank you for your letter of support for our grant that we applied for the Maryland Historic Trust. Um, this was part of the, the information, they were requesting additional information since the museum is going to be, the proposed museum is, will be placed in the Bellevue Park. We need to get, uh, um, your willingness to complete this, the letter of consent.
Okay, that sounds great. Any other discussion?
Uh, so just a question. I, I've been through Maryland Historical Trust capital grants. I know about these letters because of the easements. If the trust gives funding for the preservation of a property, they wanna ensure that it's not gonna get changed or demolished or something like that. And, uh, that, that, that their investment in, in this will, will, will remain. Um, and, uh, I, I presume that the preservation easement is for the historic structure that is being placed on this property, but that, but that you can't, uh, you, you can't attach an easement just to a building, you need to attach it to the property that it sits on and therefore, you need, you need the counties as the property owner to, to do this. Do I have that right?
Um, from my understanding, it's more of protection of, um, if there's any historic relevance of the property, um, not necessarily for the building.
It's really about the property and any archaeological resources that might be under the sod or something like that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Keisha?
Sorry, um, I have no questions. I mean, I'm just glad to see that, uh, this is moving forward, um, you know? Maybe not at the pace that we wanted it to, but, um, certainly I'm in support of the letter for the museum project.
Okay, sounds good. Anybody else make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay, sounds great. Appreciate you staying.
Congratulations, Dr. DeShield.
Yep.
And finally, council, I just have an announcement to make. Citizen, the Citizen Scrap Tire Collection Event that's hosted by Midshore, the Midshore Transfer Station, Talbot County, will be Saturday, this Saturday, September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, from eight AM to two PM. And that is, again, the Midshore Transfer Station located at seven-three-four-one Barker's Landing Road, which is off Dover Neck Road in Easton. And that completes your, that completes your county manager report for this evening. Thank you for your support.
Okay, sounds great. Good job. Okay, next on the agenda is public comment.
And, and Mister President, we have one person who signed up in advance for public comment and that is Tina Grace Jones.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Please excuse my voice. I had some throat surgery done about two and a half weeks ago.
Okay.
Um, good evening, President Callahan, I have an emergency to attend to.
Could you, could you push the, there you go. There you go, push it up there. There you go.
Is that better?
Perfect, there you go.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, my name is Tina Grace Jones. My pronouns are she and her. And I live at two-nine-four-two-four Whitetail Drive in Cordova, Maryland. In addition to being a lifelong Talbot County resident, I am also the co-founder and a board member for the Delmar Pride Center. Uh, I come here tonight to request that the council amend the equal treatment resolution that was presented just earlier this evening to also include the terms sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression. Numerous studies have shown that LGBTQ plus members of the community faced increased discrimination, which all too often results in trauma and increased rates of suicide amongst this population. In fact, a recent study reported that just over fifty percent of LGBTQ plus youth seriously considered suicide in the last twelve months. Um, I have direct experience with this fact. Not only am I a suicide survivor as an LGBTQ person, but I am also a foster parent who lost a non-motinary teenager to suicide just last May of twenty-twenty-two. The good news is, is while I can't bring Aria back, I can try to help others by asking that this council please include protections for this important part of our population. Science has shown that the number of suicides can be reduced by creating a community that is more accepting of people who are different. One study recently documented that rates of suicide dropped by forty percent if just one person reaches out to that LGBTQ teen. It is very important in this world today that we show as leaders in our community that we are here to welcome everyone. And for that reason, I implore that this council please expand the proposed equal treatment resolution to include protection for all LGBTQ plus people by including the terms sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Lusher, anybody else?
Uh, that's all that we have signed up in advance.
That's all we got set up? Okay, all right, anybody here to my right wanna come on up? Yes, come on up. You've been very patient in the back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Christina Drosten and I wanna thank you all for the work you do late into the night on a regular basis, 'cause it's definitely a long evening. So, thank you for keeping our county running. Um, as a local physician, I wanna say that I strongly believe that vaccination and infectious disease control decisions should continue to be made by our well-trained public health officials. So I appreciate, um, the vote on that resolution earlier today. I also wanna comment on the same, um, resolution that Tina Jones just brought up. And that is the proposal to amend Section one-oh-two of our county charter to add the term genetic information. As a physician and a mom, I think that adding this phrase right now is unnecessary at this time and that it does not strengthen protection to anyone's liberties. On the contrary, based on what we have seen in other parts of the country, I wanna voice my concern that this phrase can be used to actually discriminate and take away liberties from people here in Talbot County, in particular, our transgender and gender queer communities. These rights include important liberties that are based on core human rights, not politics. I also wanna extend my thoughts that whether we remove, um, I, I do, I would like to see genetic information removed as a phrase. And then I also support the recommendation to add, um, gender identity, gender expression, and sexual orientation. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, anybody else like to come on up? Okay. All right, we're winding down here, so, uh, we're gonna start with, uh, council comments. Uh, I'll start with you, Keisha. How about that?
Did you say you're starting with me?
Yep.
Oh, okay. You caught me off guard.
That's all right, that's all right.
I know you did that on purpose.
I did.
You know, I just, um, all the presentations tonight, it's been a really long meeting. I've been trying to, hey, alert, uh, through, through the meeting, not feeling well. Um, but, you know, I thank everybody who came in tonight, um, to present and voice, you know, their opinion. Um, as always, um, I respect all of my colleagues, um, for bringing things forth. And, um, I, uh, look forward to being back at our, our next meeting. Um, so I wish everyone, uh, a good week and, um, I hope to be back next meeting.
That sounds great.
I'll pass.
You're passed, okay. Mr. Lusher?
Nothing further for me.
Okay. I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna piggyback on, on Keisha. Um, we had a long night. We had a lot of people here to voice her opinion, and, and that's what these meetings are about. That's what it's all about, to voice her opinion. I thought we did a great job, we listened. You know, you, you agree to disagree, and this council did a great job tonight, and I'm proud of them. Staff did a great, great job this week, putting everything together. The agenda was big tonight. We knew it was gonna be a little bit of, you know, things going on, but that, that's what it's all about. That's, that's why this council is getting along and working with the public and doing the best we can to make these big decisions for Talbot County. And we wanna look out for all our constituents in the county, and we wanna do the best job for you. So other than that, Mr. Lusher, you wanna bring us home?
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, October tenth, beginning at six o'clock PM. The council will be convening an open session at four-thirty PM, and then adjourning into closed session to discuss real estate, legal, and personnel matters, as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. Therefore, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene as, as noted? And on Tuesday, October third, the county council will be holding two meetings, both of which will be held at the Talbot County Free Library, Easton Branch. At four o'clock PM, a joint work session with the Town of Easton Housing Commission of Talbot, and represent, representatives from Penrose to discuss the Dover Brook redevelopment project. And at five o'clock PM, a meeting with elected officials from the towns of Easton, Oxford, Queen Anne, St. Michael's, and Trap. Both meetings are open to the public. And now, a meeting, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second to adjourn the meeting. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?